Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 13th, 2022 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually. We're glad that you've joined us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearings portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to make comments on the subject at hand. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then move to those who are joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, in addition to the ones during the public hearings, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per each public participation session. Due to the breadth of tonight's agenda, we ask that participants keep their comments to under three minutes. The first session of public participation will be limited to one hour. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. If we can have the roll call, Mr. Cracker.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitor, you have a call.
Thank you, sir.
With that, we do have a special presentation tonight. We have the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, Donna Stone and Lee Paboni, to present the FBI Trilogy Award to the Phoenixville Police Department. With that, I will turn over the proceedings to our Police Chief Marshall and Mayor Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much. Thank you for being here today. We are extremely proud and privileged to have an incredible group, certainly of first responders within our community, specifically our Phoenixville Police Department. We have a number of continuing education programs, which we constantly strive to ensure our police are the most well-trained here in not only Phoenixville, but in Chester County. And we are excited to celebrate today with the Chief Operating Officer of the FBI LIDA, the FBI Trilogy Award, and that is the COO, and it is Mark Clark. And I would ask that Mr. Clark would please come forward and give us a little background about the program. And as he's approaching the podium, I would also just state that we are fortunate to have not only our Chief of Police, Brian Marshall, but also both of our lieutenants, Joe Nemec and Brian McIntyre, have both completed 120 hours of training. And by the first quarter of 2023, our Detective Sergeant, Sergeant Pat Mark, will have also completed this program. And it specifically focuses on supervisory command and executive leadership. Thank you so much, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council. Thanks. Thank you for letting me take a couple of minutes of your time before you do some of the borough's business to recognize the police department from FBI LIDA. We are a nonprofit law enforcement leadership training association. We have a membership of about 12,000. We teach about 14,000 law enforcement professionals a year, and that's about 460 classes. And the Phoenixville Police Department is the first police department in Chester County. We have a couple others in Pennsylvania that have been recognized with this award, which the Trilogy Award is a three-part leadership series that's nationally recognized as a excuse me, as a recognized as a leadership, something for your resume and for your career development. So we appreciate the chief and the two lieutenants who went through our leadership program. And the chief is supporting his leadership of his department, and it's making for a better community. So I do appreciate that, and it's recognized the forward-thinking of the chief and honored to recognize the Phoenixville Police Department for dedication to law enforcement leadership, as demonstrated by all command staff completing the FBI LIDA Trilogy Series.
Thank you so much. Come up for a photo.
Again, congratulations to our police department and our department heads for that acknowledgement from the FBI Law Enforcement Association. With that, we will move on to the first round of public participation. Prior to tonight's public participation, we did want to let everybody know that we will not be addressing or responding to any questions or comments regarding the kindergarten center property. This is upon the direction of our solicitor, because the school district has threatened the borough with litigation. So with that, we'll be opening the first round of public participation. For any folks in the audience who was not here a few minutes ago when we went through the opening rules, please, any members of the public who are wishing to make public participation may do so both virtually and in person. We will be starting tonight's public participation with those who are in the room. Members who are joining us digitally on Zoom can raise their hand digitally. We will try to leave about 20 minutes. We will be limiting the first round of public participation to one hour, since we have a long agenda tonight. So the first, we will try to save the last 20 minutes of that hour for those joining us via Zoom. So with that, any members of our public who are wishing to make comment? Please state your name, address, and sign into the sheet.
Speaking of litigation, I just kind of last month, the Borough Council egregiously used the eminent domain law to condemn a piece of land in Fillmore Village. Much of the council discussion revolved around the need for emergency access to the Adessa development. Interestingly, this piece of land was supposedly controlled by the developer and one of his approval conditions. In the name of safety and to settle this dispute, Fillmore Village, through its attorney, offered emergency access only through Ashburn to Odessa. The Borough Council dismissed this offer, has chosen to use taxpayer dollars to defend their dubious use of the law. Occasionally in life, you get a chance to have a do-over. You know, you make a mistake, you can, once in a while, you just get that opportunity to change your outlook on something. And I'm just disappointed that with that opportunity that you guys had last week, that we couldn't have found some middle ground to still satisfy your need for emergency use through Ashburn for that development that was so important to you guys and to settle this. But unfortunately, I guess we'll add one more piece of litigation to you guys to discuss monthly. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Quinoso, and I reside on Seminole Alley, also in Fillmore Village. I've written down my statements, so I'll try to read that pretty quickly. The back of my property, what is now considered, it overlooks what is now considered the eminent domain. That eminent domain, to my understanding, also includes Ashburn Road, which is an entry street to the portion of our village. The area of land has been the basis of many debates and discussions, of which builders and the borough would like to see it used for. And I have certainly sat on my share of meetings explaining the issues that may impact our Fillmore Village community. It is now my understanding that the borough expects to open my community as a throughway to avoid other access points. And with the borough's expectation of that area of eminent domain being used for public good, I must ask the question as to how they consider this decision to be at all beneficial to the common good of my neighbors and myself. I'm also understanding that the compromise was presented to the council by our HOA that suggested that our village be used for emergency vehicles only. But this was quietly rejected by council. In the five years that I've lived here, my vantage point on Seminole, I'm able to see a lot of young families, people watching their children play. I'm watching carriages. I'm watching kids riding their bikes. And taking this aside, I just want to express the concern that I have for the safety from that vantage point as I overlook and see these children and the potential of injury and damage. And so I would like to ask the council, if anyone, as we've had these many years of discussions over this piece of property, if council members have taken an opportunity to go through our village, to drive through our village on a Saturday afternoon or in the middle of the week, and have seen the activity that ensues there constantly. And I also would like to ask the question if that would be something that we could also have you all consider as a group or as individuals, to take the opportunity to drive through our community, to understand the point of access that we are so concerned about as being a crucial, crucial liability to the borough. Should any one of our children, our folks be injured and whatnot? The emergency access is a great compromise. I feel presented to you by our HOA. I want to thank you for your time tonight and giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane Dougdale, resident of Phoenixville. And I'm here to advocate for using eminent domain to keep public land in public hands. I would like to respond to the words that your solicitor spoke recently regarding this request. We were told at the council meeting in October that the borough would have to have, quote, "strong legal justification or breach of law" on the part of the school district in order to win eminent domain, end quote. We've inquired about this to several other lawyers, and we are told that, in fact, courts very rarely refuse eminent domain requests from a municipality if the land is to be used for public good. In the case of the kindergarten center, your letter to the school district in January of this year, describing your intended use for the land, clearly describes the public good use for the land. For example, you wrote that you intend to use portions of the land in a park-like manner, other portions to create classroom learning centers, and all of it on a multitude of sustainable endeavors. We invite you to rethink this. We were also told at that meeting in October that there is no grant money available for condemnation, that is, for acquiring the land through eminent domain. That seems to be based on the conviction that the grant money must be available upfront. The lawyers that we consulted assure us that grant money does not have to be available upfront, that eminent domain can be approved in anticipation of grant money being made available. And we know of several sources that are likely to give such grants if requested. For example, we urge you to reach out to Chester County, since we've been told that they're willing to offer assistance in the purchase. Please let us know if you, when you've had that discussion and whether or not it's productive. Again, we urge you to rethink this. The property of the kindergarten center is exactly the kind of land the borough needs to meet the vision of its comprehensive plan, that is, park-like, open space, close to downtown. It's also exactly the kind of land needed to mitigate the climate impacts we're already experiencing, trees and open space near the river to absorb rain and rising water and shade to cool the heat of summer. We were told in that October meeting that the borough only rarely uses eminent domain, and then only when necessary for public welfare. Mitigating floods and excessive heat are indeed necessary for public welfare. We urge you to rethink this. Once this land is lost, it can never be regained. Now is the time to keep this public land in public hands. Thank you.
Good evening. It's unfortunate that the school board has apparently brought an action or thinking about bringing
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and whether you're a resident of the borough?
And I live on Washington Avenue, 85 Washington Avenue in the borough. So it's unfortunate, but we're trying to, as Jane just described, find some kind of a fit for that piece of property that doesn't result in a lot of changes in the neighborhood, a lot of traffic issues, safety issues, and does not cause a lot of strife within the community. So one of the things that's interesting is that we have pursued different legal directions in terms of trying to gain standing so that we could have a say in the matter. And unfortunately, we didn't get that. But we do have other actions underway that should the sale be approved with Toll Brothers, we have a way of challenging that. So, and actually asking them to undo the document and start over again, basically make it null and void, which I believe would not get the borough in a situation where you would have any legal liability at that point. So should that come to pass, that's the point where we'd like to suggest that we do through eminent domain or through just a discussion among the parties, including the school board, the Borough Council, nature conservancies, the county, and the citizens, and work out a best use for that property. So if we're able to remove the risk that apparently is before you now, I'm hopeful that you'll keep your mind open to another path forward. Thank you.
Marilyn Harvey, Fillmore Village. Imagine it's 2019, and you invest all of your life savings into moving into this quirky little town. You carefully select a safe, diverse town home community, walking distance to fun events such as Blockfest and last Saturday's Firebird Festival. The community is perfect for you, since your neighborhood has numerous children constantly playing outside, and retirees like yourself are frequently walking their dogs multiple times a day. Now imagine it's 2026, and children tragically can no longer be seen riding their bikes on the streets. Instead, your neighborhood has become a high-traffic, cut-through area for cars, trucks, and numerous vehicles. You, council, have the power to stop this scary and dangerous future. I'm Marilyn Harvey, a Fillmore Village resident and secretary to the HOA. I, like you, have the responsibility and ensure the greater good of our residents. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the compromise we have offered. In my professional life, I negotiate thousands of deals to ensure a win-win for multiple stakeholders. There are three reasons I believe this is a win-win that will benefit all the residents of Phoenixville and the Borough Council. Number one, the compromise focuses on safety and ensures emergency access. Number two, the compromise is in accordance with previously approved Borough Council actions. And number three, the compromise avoids costly legal fees. A bit of background, when I purchased my home, I did the due diligence and read all the disclosure documents, and it was not disclosed to any of us that a potential road, northern relief route, would be going through our neighbor. I have the documents here, and I'm happy to share that with the council. On my first point, at the last council meeting on November 1st, many of you asked very, very thoughtful questions before approving the eminent domain and the condemnation action, which led to the taking of our property, an area we have plans to build a dog park in. The reason given before you voted to approve this was it was necessary to provide emergency access to parts of the borough. It was specifically stated, and I quote, "My number one concern is and it has been that we have proper emergency access. Our compromise directly addresses that concern and gives the borough access to the Ashburn Road for emergency vehicles. I understand the manual billards could potentially create unequal access and would maybe slow down emergency vehicles. We have seen electronic billards used in other cities, and we believe this could feasibly be developed here." My second point, on December 14, 2021, last year, at the council meeting, the approval of Odessa was contingent on the developer supplying, quote, "the documentation to support his ownership of the right-of-way for connection to Ashburn Road." He could not and did not do this. Subsequently, Mr. Moskowitz came to our HOA board meeting this past April at the request of the borough, who asked him to work with Fillmore Village HOA. At this time, he told us we have three choices: no road, emergency only, or full road. He said the borough was fine with the two access points to Odessa, and it was our choice. We voted for no road and thought the issue was closed. We are quite surprised to see it appear as an eminent domain agenda item at last month's meeting. Thirdly, after disappointingly learning that the borough last week in closed session voted to reject our compromise, we have authorized our attorney to file a legal objection to the eminent domain action. We all know court cases can get quite expensive for both sides. If the borough accepts our compromise, the residents of Phoenixville will not be subject to costly legal fees. Additionally, the borough can save even more money, since we have also offered to take back the expense of maintaining the roads, the trees, the sidewalks, and snow removal for Ashburn Road if the borough accepts our compromise. I understand your role is not an easy one. You must balance the needs of some residents against the needs of other residents. We share your goals of ensuring Phoenixville is safe for all residents. Eminent domain, by definition, should only be used for the greater good of all, and I believe this compromise protects the primary stated concern of emergency access, is in accordance with the previous borough's actions, and will save significant legal expense for both of us. For these reasons, I urge you at your January meeting to reconsider accepting our win-win compromise. In the meantime, enjoy your holidays, and thank you for listening.
Evening, everyone. Ralph Cockerham, Boy Scout later 258, also a committee member of the Firebird Festival. Many of you know me. I am an active community member, very busy. And I stand here with my fellow neighbors as a resident in Fillmore Village. I was asked to come tonight because I was alerted to a situation where a decision was made behind closed doors to where an offer we had made was rejected. I asked that we come together, we figure out what the benefits are for both of us, because a benefit of you taking our land and running over a child, causing additional traffic, additional, I'll just call it not benefits to us, is hardship for our community. And I think we've made some offers. We need to come together. We need to talk about it. I've met with Mr. David Moskowitz many times. He had promised me that we would sit down all together and not make a harsh knee-jerk decision, that we would talk together as a community and a borough. I have not seen that. I've not been involved in that. Again, I'm very busy, but I just asked, based on some of the situations that we've encountered and some of the decisions, that maybe there's a chance that we can come back together and discuss and see what the benefits are for both of us. Because my understanding is the eminent domain, there's an offer to give us $10,000 for the right-of-way. To me, $10,000 is not enough to save a child's life, to cause some of the additional traffic, some large trucks coming in. You know, basically, I know I'm running on here, but let's just get together. Let's talk about it. Let's have, you know, an agreement that benefits both of us. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. David Lutzker, 243 Morgan Street, resident and also president of the Phoenixville Green Team. I'd like to share with you some of my objectives, long-term and short-term. Establish trail corridors through permanent open space or by easement and construct the missing trail gaps in the overall regional trail network. Provide human-scaled outdoor spaces for pause and contemplation. Improve the pedestrian accessibility to allow people, et cetera, et cetera. Trail town is also a goal. There are many more, but I don't want to take your time reading to you what you wrote. You probably figured out, I'm quoting directly from the Borough Comprehensive Plan, adopted by this council a few months ago. A great work. Tell the public. Comprehensive Plan is a great read. I would go so far as to say inspire it. Can I say it's remarkable? I feel like you already have your hearts in this. You wrote it. You've already put your money where your mouth is regarding the kindergarten center. So you're walking the walk, you're talking the talk. I'm not going to rehash what I've said in the past, nor what others have said tonight. The question is what to do and what to do now. We need to keep asking that question, because the situation is not static. It's dynamic. It's changing all the time. Yes, there are pending cases in the courts that may be litigated related to the sale of the kindergarten center to Toll Brothers, but the borough is not party to any of those. I thank you for the information about a threat from the school board to sue the borough. Take that information under advisement, for sure. Yes, there are also other entities out there that have deep pockets and clever lawyers, and anybody's allowed to sue anybody. Yes, when the borough is sued, it is taxpayer money that is being spent to defend even a Spurrius lawsuit. As a losing bidder on the property, you were an interested party. And in an abundance of caution, you might make a case that there are risks associated with talking about someone else's pending litigation and apparently other risks from the school board that hopefully we'll find out about, find more about it. I know that there are intelligent, experienced lawyers who can get together and don't agree on a given legal question. I'd like for us to find a way to discuss, explore, share ideas for grants, options for cooperating with other agencies, the use of eminent domain. And while caution is always advisable, perhaps for something as important as 7.4 acres that are a five-minute walk from the middle of town, this falls into the category of things that are worth being sued over, if it ever comes to that. Let's find a way to keep public land in public hands. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to ask you all a question. Why did you run for office?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you please state your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Lisa Longo, Phoenixville. Why did you run for office? Was it to create controversy and lawsuits? I doubt it. It was to serve your community. It was to help make the community a better place. And that's what I'm hearing from the people in Fillmore Village, and that's why I'm here. The fact that the school district would behave in a bullying manner and attempt to intimidate council with the threat of a lawsuit that would go nowhere. No judge would even hear such a thing. That's ridiculous. And I'm just insulted that they would insult your intelligence that way. I'm here to ask three things. We've heard a lot of rumors about why eminent domain can't happen. The first one was grants. Can't use eminent domain with grants unless grants are in hand. I've called the state. I've called the county. I've talked to conservation. I've talked to everybody. None of them said that was true. The second reason was, another rumor, can't use it against a taxing authority. A higher authority, somebody said. A higher authority, somebody said. First of all, the school district is not a higher authority. And second of all, yes, you can. I've talked to three different lawyers. The third reason was because the borough made a prior offer, and this would put you in a bad faith situation, that you were just sour grapes. You were going to take it because they rejected your offer. Also not true. I'm not asking you to go back to that original offer and do what you said you were going to do. I'm asking you to look at the environmental standards and keep open space and go to the comprehensive plan and have trails. I'm asking you to talk to Montclair, to the families that were flooded, and what this might do to their property. We had an environmental consultant come and walk the property. There is absolutely no chance there will not be increased flooding if this development is allowed. It is a danger, clear and present to our community. So again, I'm going to ask you why you ran for office. Why are you sitting here when you could be doing anything else? I know I sat at school board. I went to those meetings for ten years. And we all want to make it a better place, but you have power. And local elected officials aren't often told just how powerful they are, but the buck stops here. You are the people who can make a difference right now in the lives of every single person in Phoenixville. You can go to the school district and the county, form a council task force, sit together in a room and come up with a solution. This is a win-win-win, the open space via eminent domain. There's absolutely no reason this couldn't happen. In fact, when I sat on the board, the mayor came to me with County Commissioner Moskowitz and asked us to hold the kindergarten center for potential use, not to list it for sale. And the board agreed, and so we held that land until early 2020. So the board would be open to discussions. Whatever happened to break it down, I don't know. But again, someone said earlier, you can right a wrong. You can say, we went down a wrong path. Let's fix this. The school board can do the same thing. This site is a five-minute walk to downtown. Part of the comprehensive plan calls for this exact kind of open space. This is, in your words. So in closing, I want you to just remember, I asked you this last time, right? Do you believe in climate change? What is going to happen to our friends and neighbors in Montclair? Will this detrimentally harm them? Absolutely. In addition, there might be underground oil and gas tanks that are leaching on that site. There's a lot of different concerns. So one or two of you, that's all it takes. You don't have to be unanimous. You can stand up, any one of you, and say, we need more information. We need a task force. We need to look at this. You can reach out to a school board member, sit down, have a conversation. And in the end of the day, I want you to remember, why did you run for office? Why are you here? Thank you.
I have a long name.
Well, you write that out. We, just so the audience knows, we have about five more minutes for in-house, and then we'll switch over to virtual, assuming that there's folks on virtual. Just update.
Hello, my name's Andrew Korianski. I'm resident from our village, Phoenixville. I'm actually now the president of our HOA and am quite honored to be so, as I imagine that all of you are honored to be in your roles. And I have to say thank you for taking the responsibility, as myself and the other board members have done for our community. And we do it, I think, for the same reasons as you do, because we care. We care a lot. We want the common good in our community, just like you want common good for all of Phoenixville. And our community is only one of Phoenixville. So thank you for being passionate and thank you for being dedicated. I'm here, and I really can't say much more than my colleagues have already said. Marilyn gave you a very logical and factual points to consider as you reconsider the offer that we've made. Tom pointed out that this is not new. He is a new resident to Fillmore Village, but yet he's really caught up. He's quite motivated. I'm old to Fillmore Village and now not so old to Phoenixville, but feeling like I am. And I have to say that we have a lot of people who are not really new neighbors, but also really young neighbors, my kids especially. And you heard the impassioned pleas to protect the safety of our kids completely. You know the intersections, Ashburn and Bunny. We stood out there, Mr. Kirchner, Ms. Webb, and we saw the traffic. You know the traffic that'll be coming, and as it connects out the township line, what it will do into our neighborhood. That's known. So the decision that's already been made to go ahead with condemnation, to move ahead with taking dedication of Ashburn and Bunny, that's your choice. For safety, for the common good, is the argument that we heard. And that's why we went ahead and asked our attorney to go ahead and make the offer, because we'll have safe access to the new neighbors in a DSA. And we'll also maybe have more safe access for us, too. That's great. There'll also be a walking connection to this Cucul River Trail without busy traffic over this Cucul River Trail. And the neighbors, of course, from DSA can get over to the rest of the borough. That's a pretty good accomplishment. What does it not accomplish? I don't know. And that's really not clear. Still, it's not clear. And that's what I said last time when I came. I said, we feel like you're moving very quickly. And that's exactly what's happened. We've now incurred thousands of dollars of attorney fees in just the last month, trying to catch up, trying to understand what's happening. And as was mentioned by Marilyn, yeah, we're now going forward. It's not how we want it to be at all. We're all like-minded. We're all caring, motivated, dedicated people that want the right thing for all of the neighbors, all the residents of Phoenixville. So please, as you meet tonight and in your future sessions, reconsider the offer we made and also reconsider your other options, such as fixing the tunnel below Fillmore. Common safety, common good, such as using moreware, which is already being restored, and that's pretty, or improved, I should say. That's really impressive. Please reconsider your decisions, past and future, and think about us in Fillmore Village. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Stephen Basic. I'm going to kind of take this in a little bit of a different direction. I want to speak for the voices of people that are not here in our government.
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you state whether you're a resident of the borough or not?
Yes, I'm a resident of the borough on Bridge Street.
Thank you.
I see, as I walk around town, I see government buildings that do not display an American flag that should be flying above them, yet others have flags and display them the way they should be. As I come down here to the township building, I see an American flag with a flag that's underneath it that does not belong there and needs to be removed. It should be hung on a separate pole altogether. And for those that have lost their lives, there should be a flag up there remembering them. So please take into consideration the way you hang your flags in this township and show some respect for those that didn't come home. Thank you very much.
It does look like we have a few more people on Zoom, so we will move, we'll do one more in here. And then after you, Chris, we're going to move over to Zoom for a moment.
Great. I'll be real quick. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to address you once again. I just wanted to follow up on the comments that were made tonight, and sorry to hear that the school district apparently doesn't want you guys to dream. We want you to dream, and we want the school district to dream, and we, and the community, want everybody to think ways that we can all work together to accomplish a dream and to leave this world a better place. You found a way to eminent domain for the things that you want. You found a way to build a beautiful rec center. You found a way to build an amazing park where the Firebird took place this weekend. And I just hope that you will continue to think about ways that you'll be in a position once the litigation stops with the Sunshine lawsuit against the school district and the court decides whether they even follow the right protocol with which to enter an agreement of sale. And then you'll be in a place where maybe you can be one of the other people that can work together with them in a positive, proactive way to create an amazing legacy. Thank you very much for your time, and let's keep dreaming.
We will move over to Zoom for any folks who are joining us digitally. If they want to raise their hands on the Zoom platform, a member of our staff will unmute you and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comment to council. If we move through the Zoom queue and still have time remaining in our one-hour allotment, we'll move back to those joining us in the room.
Mr. Daley Leonard, your microphone is unmuted.
Perfect. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. If you can just state your name and address.
All right. Thank you. Yep. I'm Jake Daley Leonard, Washington Avenue Borough resident here in Phoenixville. I wanted to raise some questions regarding our outsourced tax collection providers. The reason I ask is because Keystone Collection Group seems to intentionally obfuscate information in order to increase the amount collected via fees. My wife and I are relatively new residents of Phoenixville who have lived in ten municipalities across four states combined, and Phoenixville is the only municipality either of us have lived in that does not directly debit income tax through paychecks or communicate directly with the bank for property taxes. I'd like to focus on the property tax aspect, as this seems most in the provider's favor at the property owner's expense. The collector reaches out to the property owners directly, who then have to send that same letter to their mortgage servicer so that the servicer can then send the money back to the tax collector. We have to chase the service provider and follow up with them to ensure it's received and acted upon. To me, that very much seems like the primary purpose of the tax collection agency. So I wonder, you know, why are we paying them if they're outsourcing their primary function to us? Lastly, there is no single point on their website where you could locate property information to ensure that any property tax exemptions, such as the homestead exemption and others, have been applied fairly. When I've reached out previously, they have responded in a reasonable timeframe, but it's only for a portion of the information at any given time, not for the full amount, and not located under anything convenient, such as property address or a profile that you could create to aggregate the information. This, combined with the inefficiencies of mail communication between property owners and their mortgage service providers, enables a conflict of interest that allows the agency to more easily collect additional fees at residents' expense. So I wanted to know, you know, how these services are compensated, whether they're paid a flat fee, a percentage of revenue collected, or a combination of both, and how often the contracts are renewed. I would greatly appreciate publication and a period of public comment leading up to the next renewal to ensure that we're evaluating all relevant considerations. Thank you.
Ms. Fox, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. So I'm Emmeline Fox. I live on First Ave in Phoenixville and just want to echo what other folks have talked about tonight and show my support and encouragement for all of you to, sounds like, really do the right thing and at least take the time to pursue really understanding what we can do with the property that's the kindergarten center. I agree with Dave that it seems like it's something worth being sued over. Just, you know, the potential, the ecosystem services that that land is fulfilling for us right now to remove them seems like a really huge mistake that, you know, you all and we would have to live with. And the benefits that keeping that land as open space is really, you know, as Chris says, it's like we, there's so much to dream about for that area. So please, please consider all of your options, and I appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, your microphone is unmuted. Mr. Anderson, your microphone's unmuted.
Try the next one, maybe.
Mr. Connolly, your microphone is unmuted.
Mark Connolly, Phoenixville Green Team, thirty-five Crombie Road. I thank the council and the staff for the hard work they do. Boy, it seems that eminent domain is on the agenda tonight. I'm happy to be part of the group that's bringing an eminent domain request that could become your legacy, that has over fifteen hundred people supporting it, and has grant money to actually pay for this. So I won't repeat what's been said. I think it's pretty clear. I will just state that I think that there is a very good case for eminent domain that is bulletproof in the law. And the three exhibits that I would offer are the January eighteenth bid letter, which states the vision for the park and the learning center. Second bit of evidence is the comprehensive plan. I think it's very clear that it calls for a new park if and when significant public support shows up. And I say that we're here. We're calling to you. So I'll just close in saying I encourage each of the council members to explore this issue of eminent domain and ask yourself, if there is to be a new park in this borough, if not now, when? And if not us and you, who will make this happen? Thank you very much.
Ms. Anderson, your microphone is unmuted.
Ms. Anderson, if you can hear us, your microphone is unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes. Hello.
Oh, it's Bridgette Anderson. I live on Buchanan Street in the borough, and I just wanted to echo a lot of the comments I've heard this evening supporting the option for keeping open space to save the borough a lot worse trouble than a lawsuit in terms of what will happen with flooding and climate change if that area is developed as currently planned. And I agree with Lisa that having a frivolous lawsuit borough bully people into feeling that their hands are tied when their powerful borough council members is not a reasonable thing. And there are options, and I hope that you'll continue to consider them. Thank you for your time.
If anyone else joining us via Zoom tonight would like to raise their hand digitally, seeing none, we'll move back to in-person, in-the-room public participation. If anybody has not had a chance to make comment tonight. Okay. Seeing none and seeing none on Zoom, we will close the first round of public participation and move on with our agenda tonight. The first item for council consideration is our consent agenda, item five, which is covering meeting minutes and items that came out of some of our boards and committees. What is council's pleasure tonight for our consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, to approve the consent agenda. Questions on the consent agenda, questions on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. With that, we'll open up, we have our communication council participation. Any communication updates or council participation from council here, Ms. Berkeley?
While it's not the first time it was mentioned tonight, I do want to thank the Firebird Committee, both old and new, and all of those who have, in nineteen years, made the spirit of the Firebird grow. I'd also like to thank the current committee, the community, and the Phoenixville J.C.s. We had a very successful Firebird Festival. Thank all of our emergency responders, our police, our fire, and our EMS. We had over eight thousand people visit our borough, visit our park, and visit our festival. We bussed over six hundred and fifty people in from surrounding areas like the outskirts of Phoenixville or into the festival area, and that was all a free public event that was all fundraised. And that was all a free public event that was all fundraised by people in our community. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that and all of their work to make such a successful event. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Moore.
I'd just like to pay tribute to the Phoenixville Fire Department and the other first responders. We'd had a serious fire in the West Ridge Development a week ago last Friday. Several families were displaced from the condos, but the great coordination by not only our fire department and the surrounding companies, also the police department and our office of emergency services. Everyone got out safely. You know, it was a bit of a tragedy and the people are going to be displaced for some time, but a lot of support really, and I just want to pay tribute to the whole first responders and that. It was very, very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I will just make one comment following up from, from one of the comments during public participation. For the Phoenixville Borough Taxes, our tax collector is an elected position, but most of our taxes and communications are done through the county appointed, which is Keystone Collection. That is a county appointment, not one that comes up through the borough. So just wanted to give a little bit of background on that if they're still listening. Other members of the council, Mr. Kirchner.
Mr. President, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to pass along some really sad news personally. The Archdiocese of Philadelphia announced yesterday that it is closing Sacred Heart Church on Church Street. It had been assigned to St. Anne's Parish. Personally, I say because my father-in-law and my wife had, and my children all had their sacraments there. I got married there 38 years ago. And as my college roommate told me tonight, they're the best two years of my wife's life. But it, I mean Sacred Heart was, is a foundation of the Slovak community in this town. And it saddens me greatly. I'm very disappointed that, you know, the Archdiocese was, was not able to build that into a Latino parish with, you know, as the, as the population changes over here, obviously the Slovaks have been pretty much assimilated. And, you know, it's, it's just sad and I don't know what's going to happen there. But, you know, I just wanted to, to pass that on, I'm sure at some point. Hopefully we hear something about a, a good reuse there, but, but for now it's, it's just a sad day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Any other updates from council? Just want to echo Ms. Berkeley's comments. Firebird went off extraordinarily well with perfect weather. And it was, it was nice to see the event back to nearly full strength that we would have seen in 2019. So thank you to all the staff and volunteers who made that happen. Seeing no other council comment or participation, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mr. Erschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for those of you who have joined us here in person and those joining us virtually. I just have to say it has been a joyous couple of weeks here within the borough. Certainly all of these incredible events coming back to full strength. Thank you to all of the extraordinary volunteers, to our first responders, certainly to our borough staff and our streets department, all who make these things possible. So on behalf of all of us, certainly, I just want to wish everyone out there a very happy holiday and a very safe holiday. So thank you so much. Thanks for what you do for this community. I think the exciting thing about democracy is we don't always have to agree, but the most important thing we can do is come together in big public forums like this and have conversations that are really meaningful. Because we do, at the end of the day, all care about the community in which we live. And so thank you for caring about this community. And certainly thank you for making Phoenixville a place where every person is safe, celebrated and loved. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we have our monthly call for appointments on our various boards, committees and commissions. As some residents know, we have spots for just under 100 volunteer positions here in the borough on our various boards and committees. Right now we have openings or openings expected on planning, human relations, tree advisory, Harb and beautification advisory committee. If any members of the public who are listening tonight are interested in joining any of these boards or committees, most of them meet monthly at most and help us plot our way forward on the various topics. Please reach out to your borough council person and they will walk you through the process for applying for any of these openings. With that, we do have our annual renewal for our vacancy board chair. Mr. Leo Skoda, our previous mayor, has indicated interest in serving in this capacity again. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that council appoint Leo Skoda as vacancy board chair, term expiring December 31, 2023.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Dugan. This is one of the few positions that we have to appoint annually. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero and we thank Mr. Skoda for his continued commitment to the community. With new business tonight, we have a number of items to consider. First up tonight, we have a fire service operation agreement, operating agreement with Phoenix Hose Hook and Ladder Company, number one. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve a fire service operating agreement with Phoenix Hose, Hook and Ladder Company, number one. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion or questions on the, the proposed agreement? Is one I know we've worked with, with our solicitor, the volunteer department and our new fire chief to come up with a sound agreement. And I appreciate the time and effort they've put into this. Seeing no other comment, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Up next, we have a lease agreement with Phoenix Hose Hook and Ladder Company, number one.
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the lease agreement with Phoenix Hose, Hook and Ladder Company, number one. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on this motion? Again, I thank staff, solicitor, the department and our volunteer crew for coming, you know, working together on this agreement. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And finally, we have a, we have an agreement to convey real estate between the borough and Phoenix Hose Hook and Ladder Company, number one.
Motion to approve an agreement to convey real estate with Phoenix Hose, Hook and Ladder Company, number one. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. It gets easier every time you say it. This is for two parcels in the borough that are currently owned outright by the volunteer organization. Any questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And next up, we have some new apparatus that we're looking to acquire. What is council's pleasure for the tractor drawn aerial proposal?
Okay, bear with me. This is a tongue twister. A motion to approve the purchase of a KME custom tractor drawn aerial TDA. And I guess I could have saved myself that. And further authorize Borough Council President, the Borough Solicitor and the Borough Manager to finalize and execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete such purpose recommended in committee four to zero.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. This will be a significant upgrade to our rolling stock with the fire department. Mr. Crack, I believe we had some color to add to the, to the purchase agreement that we think we've developed.
We do. There's a, there's a memo in your packet that outlines two ways to, to pursue, pursue this purchase. The first is to, to do that through the, through a loan. That would be a 10-year loan at 4.47% interest. And that would be annual payments of about 166,000 per year. The second is for the borough to, to purchase it outright using our own funds. That would be a combination of general fund of 500,000, rate stabilization, which we will realize over the course of 2023 of 319,000. And then upon taking the vehicle, the sale of the engine 65 dash two and ladder 65 for, we believe a minimum of 285,000 and then using water fund balance of 833,057. The borough would make annual payments back to the water fund of 166 for five years. The difference between the two is it saves us about $458,000 in interest over that 10 years or about $50,000. That is our recommendation is to go that route. But we didn't have all of the information when we were financed last month or, yeah, last month. So that's our recommendation, but before you vote on it tonight, we want to make sure that you know what we're trying to do and that it saves $450,000 of interest and we can do it using our own funds in half the time. So I'm open to any questions and staff's here to answer any questions as well.
And then we're still, you know, even placing the order this week, next month, either way, we'd still be looking at a two-year lead time for construction and build out, I believe.
Almost 30 months, which allows us to build on the payback.
Correct. Mr. Moore?
Yes. So how much does that draw down the water fund?
833,000.
So what would be the, what, what, yeah, what would be the balance and what potential purchases? I mean, it's a big old water plant. What potential purchases could be impacted by that drawdown? What concerns do you have?
I don't have any actual concerns. We have, we have looked at our capital projects. The biggest investment is coming later, a little bit further down in the agenda where we're increasing the amount of funds from fund balance by about $400,000, but our fund balance is around $3 million. So 1.2 of that, it will come off the top. We're still just at about 1.8, 1.9 million dollars. We have plenty of that. And we're not paying that 833, I mean, we're paying the 833, but we're not going to be using any of that in that timeframe. So we're not worried about that, but we want to make sure that your Congress that this is what we're, we're looking to do. We're trying to save over the course of time, almost 450,000 in, in interest.
I also just wanted to add that this purchase was bid already through the Coast Stars program, so we don't need to bid it at the borough level.
So a number of things to consider and, and you know, as we've been watching supply chain issues, things are not getting cheaper. So I did feel that it was important that we address or at least consider this before the end of the year. Since the longer we wait, the more expensive that truck will, will undoubtedly get unfortunately. So. Any other questions from council on this proposal, on this motion that's been made? Okay. Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Up next, we have our EMS authorization for the provider for the borough. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to appoint Tower Direct as the emergency medical service provider for the borough of Phoenixville and further authorize council president, borough solicitor and borough manager to finalize and execute any and all documents and necessary, and agreements necessary to complete such appointment recommended in committee four to zero.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. This is one that the information's been, we've been discussing this for a few months now. In fact, we've put up bids twice now. And this is one that we're, we're trying to address an issue that's facing basically every community in Pennsylvania. So is there any background or any questions council has on this motion?
I'll just give, just for clarity, we did the RFP at the beginning, late September, early October timeframe. We received three responses. We received a response from Freedom Valley Medical Rescue, which was a merger of the former Trap and the former Harleysville companies. They merged into Freedom Valley. They're actually doing business as Freedom Valley, but it's actually a subset of Harleysville. Tower Direct, which is a subset of Tower Hospital and then Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, AKA West End Fire Company. We looked at that. We looked a lot of the information. I'll start with, with Valley Forge. They were woefully inadequate in their documentation and approximately four times the cost based on the information that they provided. That left us with really looking at the two comparables, which was Freedom Valley and Tower Direct. Freedom Valley came in at about 305,000 per year and Tower Direct came in at 292 per year. We went back and talked to them about some of the things that they had. I will say that Freedom Valley reduced their cost down to 200, along with the providing subscriptions to every, every household in Phoenixville. Tower Direct's proposal at 272 also provides subscriptions to every household. The, one of the main differences is Tower Direct provides 1.5, meaning one full unit and a half a unit every day. Freedom Valley provides one unit every day. And then the, the, this, this other significant concerns that we had is that Freedom Valley seems to be in the process of building. They have a, a fleet that's quite old. That's, that's a major concern for us. We're the outlier of municipalities. Their contingent corps is on the other side of the river. And they're, they're trying to build their, their personnel at the same time. Those are things that we did not see as issues with Tower Direct. After putting everything into the, to the hopper, comparing as well as we could apples to apples. It was our final decision to make the recommendation to you that we feel is in the best interest for council to appoint Tower Direct as, beginning January 1, 2023, as the provider of emergency services to the residents of the borough of Phoenixville.
I need, you know, two important points that I just wanted to, to reiterate here. The, the provider will be housed at our new fire station location on Paradise Street within our emergency services headquarters now. And that it, I think a lot of folks probably, if they haven't had to use the ambulance, don't understand the importance of this subscription model and the doing the way of that subscription model. By, by going this route, the EMS company will not be billing for charges over and above what the insurance covers. Was the easiest way of saying it. And so in doing that, it, it's providing a benefit to, to all borough residents, which can be vital in these situations. Mr. Moore, you had a comment?
Yeah, actually, I am actually one of those people who's never used the service and I don't actually understand the subscription model. So will people be asked to pay a subscription? I don't, I don't.
No, they will not. Essentially, if I can simplistically put it or frame it. When you use those services, there's a bill that's generated. And then the process begins, how the insurance companies pay, how things are collected and what have you. At the end of the day, sadly, more often than not, there is a balance that is due. And at the end of the day, that balance comes to the person that used, sort of the family that used that. What the subscription does is it takes that away. The company, the company agrees that they will not bill after that final assessment from the insurance companies and the collections and the things that they've gone through, whatever is left over, they will not bill the customer. And that's, that's rather significant, especially with the senior community. I have a question.
Mr. Kirchner.
What about people who don't have insurance? I don't know if, if, I can't tell if Brad's here. Brad, can you come up?
If, if you'd like to step up to the podium.
That's a good question.
It is. Mr. Moore, did the subscription make sense? Otherwise?
Yes.
Brad can answer it better than I can, I believe.
So on. How you doing? I'm Brad Cosgrove. I'm the chief and director of Tower Direct EMS. So for the residents who do not have insurance, they would not be billed. It's a write-off to us. So it's ultimately to incur no additional cost other than the insurance billing. Can I answer any other questions while I'm up here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
I guess I'll just, having sat through some of these discussions, it, this is a significant, compared to what we had been paying before to trap. This is a significant increase, but it has to happen in terms of against our budget, you know, this. It has to happen because that's the way, as you mentioned, Mr. President, the evolution of, of emergency services is still a challenge across all the municipalities, but this is at least the best step we can make at this point. is still a challenge across all the municipalities, but this is at least the best step we can make at this point. Uh but it is a significant line item added to our annual budget, right?
Absolutely, and it was a surprise. So this was something that uh back in September, when we were drafting budgets and discussing these items. Uh we were not uh expecting this item. Uh this is uh later in the agenda when we vote on the tax levy. This is almost the entirety of that tax levy. Um uh up until a few years ago, ambulance services were able to self suffi- were self-sufficient based off of billing. Uh with Medicare, Medicaid reimbursements, that's no longer possible. This is a system that um I think every week in the newspaper recently, there's been another community that is seeing um closures. Uh I think it was Western Berks had closures or threatened um announcements of potential closures this week. Um this is something that that is affecting every community in Pennsylvania based on the way uh billing is is being done. So uh it's unfortunate. Uh I do think we found a good solution. We do appreciate the work the Trap has done for the last eight years almost, um but we, I feel more comfortable or I do feel comfortable moving forward with Tower tonight. Mister Kirk.
Yes, uh one more, one more question. Um this expense, does this hit the the general fund or the firefight?
Oh, this comes out of the uh it comes out of the firefight.
Good question. Good point. Any other questions, comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Uh with that, we have our master schedules of fees that we uh reapprove every year by resolution. What is council's pleasure for our master schedules of fees, Miss Dugan?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend Borough Council adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-three master schedule of fees.
Second. Motion by Miss Dugan, second by Mister Weiss. Questions on the motion? Just an uh a small number of adjustments to this year's schedule of fees. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And up next, we have our twenty twenty-three budget for final consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget.
Second. Motion by Miss Dugan, second by Mister Weiss. Any questions, comments on the final consideration for the twenty twenty-three annual borough budget? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Uh up next tonight, I believe uh staff can bring up the maps for display on our um on our screens here in in the in-house. Uh we do have um a couple of maps to look at for the reapportionment of borough wards. This is based off of the twenty twenty federal census. Um if we can bring up the uh proposed map number three, I believe. And um and if you can also tee up the precinct map also. I think whether just the two main maps that were in the butt in the packet. To give some background, uh every ten years, the borough uh adjusts ward lines, the north, middle, east and west lines to prob- uh attempt to properly uh allot the the same number of, or roughly the same number of residents per ward. And then uh we make uh recommendations on the precinct lines. I, in terms of how uh polling places are are broken up, the the three polling places within the, or three precincts within each ward. Uh this year, using uh our staff, uh our consulting engineering firm, RVE, we had the pleasure of working with our staff cartographer, which made this process um a lot more uh enjoyable for staff, I believe. And I think Owen can come up uh to the podium uh and walk us through map number three and um and the process that we went through.
Yes, thank you very much. Owen Heine with Remington Vernic Engineers. And I've got on the line here, I've got Nick Phelan, who's one of our GIS technicians. Um so thank you. We had the opportunity to go through and and look at the twenty twenty census data and relook at your ward and your precinct boundaries as a result. So um it's a very exacting process. There are guidelines that we have to follow per for the law. And um so this is a result. So Nick, if you would take us through um the changes uh that came about as as a result of the the mapping effort.
Yeah, um my name is Nick Phelan from Remington and Vernic Engineers. Uh my supervisor, Kevin Zalinski, is also on the call. And um we worked with the borough to develop these um this map, alternate scenario three, which um as you can see, there are some changes um along the um the middle, all all the ward boundaries were were moved in some fashion because due to the census data um and the population, all four wards were actually out of compliance, whether they were high um out of compliance or low out of compliance. So what we did to do that was use u- using the census data review these census blocks, which you can see are highlighted or labeled uh um with the blue text. And that allows us to kind of go through and figure out what areas would be the best to move move around the population.
Well, you're controlling the screen. Okay. Nick, you're looking at the screen as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so currently there's a precinct map up right now that's showing a precinct scenario. So there was, there's two levels of this effort, right, Nick? There's um adjusting the ward boundaries and then by population. And then it's going through and adjusting uh the precincts by voters.
Yeah, so yep, yep. Um so we had to actually go through this step first, looking at the ward boundaries and the population. And then off of that, because of the ward boundary changes, we needed to then look at registered voter counts and develop new precinct boundaries that would help um because of the ward boundaries splitting some precincts in half. Um as you can see right here, North Precinct Three got split and the half of which stayed in the North Ward and half of which moved to the West Ward. So we need to figure out, okay, how many registered voters are there? How many registered voters are within the rest of the West Ward and what's the best way to split those up evenly? While keeping the precincts as unimpacted as possible. And so um so what we did was we brought uh the word line between North and West down um and kind of followed along uh instead of following that, the the one. Yeah, instead of following there, we came and uh and went went right along where the uh number three is there. Cat capturing the entire HOA that um was Rollins Alley and Utley Alley along with the rest of that HOA. And then um moving to the north and middle, we split up Middle uh Precinct One um bringing in a large portion of the population into the North Ward and um taking them out of the middle ward as the middle ward uh had a high population total. So we follow, the word boundary now follows French Creek and um uh splitting precincts one, half of which goes, or not half of, I shouldn't say that. Um some goes into the North Ward, some stays in the middle. Then moving down um along the middle and east ward boundary, there is a piece of precinct number three in the east ward, that little, yeah, almost uh actually to the right of that. Yep, right there. And that piece got um brought from the east ward into the middle ward to help out with some population uh totals. And then along the west and the east ward boundaries, uh we cut, um I believe that is west precinct number two. And we brought um, we brought that boundary line right down Bridge Street. We captured in that block. And brought it right into uh, yep, right in the middle there and brought that block that uh that orange block, brought it into uh the east ward. And um that brought our population totals to a, into compliance. And um this would be alternate scenario three. And um then we had to adjust the precinct boundaries off of this ward scenario.
On the, on the, Nick, on the ward scenarios, um this result is that all the pop- all the populations in the different wards are within plus or minus ten percent, right, which is the guideline.
Correct, yep, correct. Um, yep, so there's your chart. There's how the wards break down. The the twenty twenty census population totals is how they broke down before we made any changes. And then alternate three population totals is the population totals as they stand, uh given that alternate three would were to be adopted. Now, off of that, we had to adjust the precinct boundaries um to kind of follow the new ward boundary lines. So we got registered voter information from Chester County. And um we are, we were able to pretty evenly across all four wards, keep a pretty even spread amongst the districts without um impacting them severely. And um so uh in the North Ward um precincts two and three, actually, all three precincts in the North Ward were were changed. Precinct two captured that piece that was brought in from the middle ward. Um and then precinct one was able to, or precinct two brought in or uh was able to, was actually captured some of precinct three and one. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Precinct two in the North Ward captured all the piece that was brought in from the middle ward. Then it caught a sliver of precinct number three, but then lost some in to precinct number one, which helped with the registered voter counts among the three precincts to make them evenly spread across the three. The middle ward was actually, the middle and the east were fairly easy as the middle ward did uh precinct number two was able to um capture that piece that was brought in from the east ward and still maintain an even spread across the three precincts. Um the east ward was able to also just consolidate that piece that was brought in from the west ward into precinct number three without dramatically impacting either of the other two precincts and still maintaining an even spread or a fairly even spread. And then um the west precinct, one, two and three all were impacted. And due to the piece that we brought in from the North Ward precinct number three, we brought that piece into the West Ward. Um the north or um, excuse me, the west precinct number one slid kind of up into the left, which captured all those registered voters in that one HOA. And um then precinct number two actually kind of elongated to the north a little bit, across French Creek, um following the railroad line there. And then um that captured that uh entire HOA there um as law, as well as um precinct number three moved up to Chestnut Street, I believe that is. And um we kept an even, a pretty fairly even spread amongst those three precincts as well. Um this was our best recommendation and uh me and my supervisor, Kevin Zalinski, as well as Owen, um reviewed this um thoroughly. And uh, yeah, Kevin, Owen, if you guys have anything further. Um and uh just one last thing, uh no polling places or elected officials were impacted um in in uh in the the rewarding scenario or this new uh voting uh precinct map.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add, and this is uh Kevin Zalinski, uh I am the uh GIS manager for Remington or Vernic. And uh Nick is uh, Nick is the best I got as far as uh redistricting and uh and reward mapping. But I do want to um also cite the statutes uh for the governing body and and the audience that um part of the statute to define either a new ward or precinct boundary. The statute's clear that we try to um not uh break up or disenfranchise any communities or neighborhoods. Uh they need to be bounded and defined by a natural man-made feature such as a roadway, a railway or a waterway, such in case in point, French Creek. And um like Nick said, the polling places uh we we were cognizant of where they are as well as um as well as the elected officials. And you have to excuse me, folks, I'm just literally getting back from another meeting and I'm watching this on my phone and in the car. So I'm doing the best I can. But um, yeah, all the precincts, uh everything that um that Nick had described is in compliance. Again, wards are based on population totals as disseminated by the the uh twenty twenty census. And then the uh the precincts are are registered voters. And we try to achieve a one-to-one balance or less than ten percent deviation um whenever possible. And these scenarios do uh do comply with all of that.
Hey, guys. And just as a reminder, we did hold a special meeting last Tuesday night at um six o'clock to to go over these maps. We reviewed six maps uh plus a couple um alternatives on the fly and uh asked the our consulting engineer to come back uh with revisions to this map, which they have done. Um Owen, was there anything else you would wanted to add um with? Otherwise, we'll, we'll.
Now, the final map's been prepared in accordance with what Nick and Kevin just mentioned. So um at this point, you know, we were able to kind of meet all the re- uh law legal requirements uh that we had to meet and um rebalance based on your population, your voters. Uh so you have a working map, working election map.
With the um, with with the background information provided to to all of us and all those viewing, uh can we start with a motion for this consideration?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mister Weiss to um schedule and advertise the uh ordinance to reapportion the borough's wards. Um any questions from council for our consulting engineer Owen or anything for our cartographers online, Miss Berkeley?
I didn't have any specific questions. Thank you for your work. Thank you for the meeting last week. Thank you for taking our feedback and working so quickly on it. Just again, for point of order and for the public, the motion and what we're voting on tonight is to schedule and advertise. So that means this will then become public information. Everyone can see that publicly. And this would not go into effect until we vote publicly in January. I believe it's January tenth, correct?
That's correct. So this is, this is just advertising. It will be available. Uh if it's not already on the website, it'll be on the website. Um and in its final cleaned up version that you're seeing tonight. So this is the the draft version to consider. So.
And so public would be able to comment on it when we hear.
In January.
In January. And um because there, I mean, there is some, for instance, you know, I'm I'm West Ward and West Ward one is, it it, there's a whole chunk of the North Ward now being added to the West Ward. And that, there's some other things like that. So ultimately, um some people who are uh who are currently serving will be serving a different population if if this map is adopted.
As as happens every ten years. Um and I I would say, you know, while we will be um looking to vote on this at the January tenth meeting, uh members of the public are always welcome to reach out to any members of council to ask questions or or um, you know, help find solutions. If there's anything that that they have questions on with this or any other item on the agenda or or borough business in general. So if there is anything, uh it doesn't have to wait till January tenth. If there is something that they had questions on, just please feel free to reach out to any of us.
This will be posted. Where, how how would somebody be able to go on the website and look this up?
It it'll be on the front page of our our website. There'll be a link to the to uh the document, the two documents themselves and uh the ordinance itself. And once we advertise, we'll actually have the, not that anybody would be able to necessarily read it, but we'll have the worded legal description of what the ward boundaries are.
Could we include the current map words as well, or so that people can do a comparison?
Yeah, I think that would be good. One of the things that I'm really pleased about about this version of the map is that it it actually solves some of the problems of previous maps. So I think not only is this a, just a great solution for our current state, but it's an improvement on our previous map. So really happy about what we have.
There there are some very clear and clean lines that have been developed that that seem logical for for the wards. Um and uh the only caveat is we are working off the data that's provided to us by the twenty twenty census. Um and that is a point in time uh count. So there are developments that were in progress or in consideration that are now built or occupied, that are not allowed to be calculated or considered when drawing these lines. So um we do know that there's some things that changed two years ago. So this is a, this is the process that we we're, we we undertake and now the process we have to follow. So any other questions from council on this lovely map? Okay, and this, so this is a vote to schedule and advertise for. Okay, and this, so this is a vote to schedule and advertise for consideration at January 10th. Meeting, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Owen. And with that, we'll move on to our tax assessment, uh appeal settlement stipulations. What is motion? Uh, what is council's pleasure?
Um, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to authorize the borough solicitor to approve tax assessment, appeal settlement stipulations.
Second.
When motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Kirchner, I believe. Any questions on this item?
I was just gonna give a quick background.
Please, Scott.
As you know, the borough rarely appeals real estate assessments. However, uh, because we are a taxing body, we are always automatically a party to any tax assessment appeal, whether taken by the property owner, the school district, or uh the county, which also rarely happens. As a result, I monitor, but am often not an active participant in the assessment appeals. Uh, so there are settlement stipulations that are negotiated oftentimes between the school district and the landowner. Um, and then because we're a party to the appeal, uh we need to sign off on those negotiated stipulations that we haven't been particularly active in. Um, so this gives me the authority that unless there's something uh unique or something that I think uh needs to be brought to your attention, I can sign off on those on the behalf of the borough.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for our solicitor or the motion at hands? Seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And our final motion under or final item under new business uh with the Paradise Street uh French Creek Bridge Inspection Report. Uh, what is council's pleasure for this?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Paradise Street and French Creek Bridge Inspection Report as recommended by the borough engineer.
Second.
Motion by Miss Webb, second by Mr. Moore. Uh, is there any background or questions from council for either our engineer or staff on this item?
How soon will the bridge be open to general traffic?
Uh, not for a while. Uh, as uh was indicated, what this uh report does is it gets filed with Penn Dot and Penn Dot then puts it into the inventory. Uh, as far as dedication, we wouldn't take dedication of the bridge until we took dedication of Smithworks Boulevard. We won't take dedication of that until they finish the majority of the major construction, which requires lots of vehicles and 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 things of that sort. So uh while the townhomes uh stacked in and otherwise are coming to the end game, you still have the apartment community. So uh I would surmise that this is dedication's probably a 2024 timeframe.
Other questions for staff on the motion or our consulting engineer? Cap. Seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
I. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Onto our ordinances and resolutions. Uh, we have several to consider tonight, including our annual tax levy. Uh, what is council's pleasure for item A?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the 2023 tax levy.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Our tax levy. Um, so what is the advertised number that we are putting forward?
The advertised uh number is 7.69 mils, of which 3.87 is for general purposes, general fund. Uh, 2.30 is for fire protection of the general fund and 1.52 is for parks and recreation of the general fund.
Thank you. Questions on the motion for the tax levy?
Mr. President, yes, you buried the lead. The um, I looked at my 2022 tax bill for uh general purposes are levy in 2022 was 4.49. So our general purpose levy is going down this year. Um, and as you alluded to previously, Mr. President, almost all of that increase is for fire protection. We referred to the ambulance um service previously. Also, we're making an investment in personnel, fire personnel because of the lack of volunteers. So um that's that that's the primary reason I changed my vote from voting against the budget in Finance Committee to voting for it. Then I'm voting for this levy tonight. Um, because I think it's very important. We invest in our our uh our firefighting infrastructure here. So thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rich. And you know, as as I alluded to at the November meeting, which um I always find fun, our advertised number was more than double what our actual adopting number is. Uh, and that's just part of the accounting that takes place as we wait for final numbers to come in, but are required by Borough Code to advertise a number even before we have all the information. I do appreciate all the work that uh our finance department has done, our our management and assistant manager to have done and all of our department heads to bring these numbers in line and keep them um as as low as possible while still making the investments that are required to provide the level of protection and quality of life services that that I think our residents have uh come to expect. So any other questions or comments on the tax levy for this year? Okay, with that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And again, thank you to staff for for all the work on this. Uh, we do have a uh ordinance of to consider for stormwater management. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter 23, stormwater management. Second.
We motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Carmenito. Uh, if we can have just a a quick background on this from our uh manager or solicitor.
Sure. So the county created an in-depth model stormwater management ordinance overhaul. They had one previously and it underwent significant revisions. And the county then sent it around to the municipalities to consider. Uh, our borough engineer spent a lot of time going through it and making sure that the model ordinance applied specifically to the borough, um which was not a light lift. Um, when, once uh RV did the really difficult work, uh they sent it to me and I got to review it for some legalities. Um, and what is before you uh is the final draft uh which was advertised on November 28th, 2022.
Mr. Cracker, anything to add? Question, comments from council on this uh uh mo- motion to um adopt repeal and replace our standing stormwater management ordinance. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor.
I.
I. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And finally, under ordinances and resolutions tonight, we have a uh resolution to uh apply for a small water sewer grant. Uh, what is council's pleasure for this item?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of a submission of a PA small water and sewer grant to D C E D Commonwealth Financing Authority for the High Service Pump Project.
Second. Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero and um hopefully we're successful in that grant application. With that, we that now brings us to our uh item 11 of tonight's agenda is our hearings for conditional use. Uh, for the next three items, I will be turning over the microphone to our solicitor, Scott, to um to organize the uh hearings.
Sure. So I will first entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and enter into a public hearing on the conditional use application submitted by Clinton Wyler.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Okay. We are now in a hearing. Is Mr. Wyler here? And are you representing yourself today? Okay. So I'm gonna have a little introduction and then I'll turn it over to you. So the borough has received a conditional use application from Mr. Wyler. Uh, the application concerns the property located at 119 South Main Street. The Phoenixville property consists of approximately 42,000, excuse me, 4,200 square feet and is located in the borough's TC Town Center zoning district. The applicant seeks to engage in an entertainment hall and tavern use in the basement level of the existing building on the property, which requires a conditional use approval pursuant to zoning ordinance section 27 dash 301 point 1 to A1 in order to permit the entertainment hall portion of the use to be operated. The nature of a conditional use application is that a conditional use is technically a permitted use under the zoning ordinance, provided that the applicant for the conditional use demonstrates two things. One is qualification for entitlement to the conditional use under the criteria that are set forth in the zoning ordinance. And two, that there is no unanticipated adverse effect to the public health, safety, and welfare. In terms of procedure for this hearing, the applicant will present its case first. The applicant has the burden of proof, so the applicant will present whatever witnesses, testimony, and evidence he chooses in an attempt to carry that burden. The board can then ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. Any parties, which I will explain in a minute, will also be given a chance to ask questions. After the applicant has finished with its case, any parties may present their own testimony and evidence. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, there will be an opportunity for anyone in attendance to make a statement for or against the application. You do not need to be a party to express your opinion during the comment period. However, with regard to becoming a party to this matter, party status is optional. What it allows you to do is to cross-examine the witnesses and to prevent your own present your own testimony and evidence. There are certain qualifications to party status. And it is necessary that you be what the municipality's planning code calls an affected or aggrieved party. That is someone who could actually be impacted positively or negatively by the application and proposed use. If you wish to become a party, you would be subject to cross-examination from the applicant as to whether or not you live close enough to really be individually impacted by the application and how that development affects you. In addition to being allowed to ask question, witness, questions of the witnesses and present evidence of their own, a party is also entitled to receive a copy of this board's decision and take an appeal of that decision in the Court of Common Pleas, if they wish to do so. So before we get started, is there anyone here who wishes to become a party to this matter? Please approach the microphone, state your name and address.
I need to sign in.
Please state your name and address.
Michael Kajak, 123 South Main Street. K A J A K.
And Mr. Kajak, approximately how far are you from the subject property?
Forty-five feet.
Does the applicant wish to question this person asking for party status? Okay. No questions? All right, with that request for party status, uh what is the board's uh feeling on that? Who, uh, anyone in fa- everyone in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, you're granted party stat or party status, Mr. Kajak.
Very familiar with the 119.
You have to, your opportunity to present your own evidence will be uh after the applicant already presents his evidence.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to have party status? Okay, seeing none. Uh, before I turn it over to the applicant, I'll mark the borough's exhibits. So the exhibits to be marked on the behalf of the borough are exhibit B1, the conditional use application and addendum submitted by Clinton Wyler dated September 14th, 2022, and designated as complete by the borough on September 28th, 2022. Exhibit B2, extension of time for conditional use email between borough and applicant dated October 14th, 2022. Exhibit B3, true and correct copy of section 27 301 2 A1 of the Phoenixville Borough Zoning Ordinance as of the date of the submission of the application. Exhibit B4, public notice for this conditional use hearing on the aforementioned application. Exhibit B5, copies of the public notice of tonight's hearing advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on November 28th, 2022 and December 5th, 2022. Exhibit B6, proof of publication of notice of the Pottstown Mercury, verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on November 28th, 2022 and December 5th, 2022. Uh, we do not currently have that, so that will be an exhibit uh when received from the paper. Exhibit B7, letter of consent from applicant's landlord, South Main Properties LLC, dated December 6th, 2022. Exhibit B8, affidavit of posting at the property owner before December 6th, 2022. And exhibit B9, affidavit of mailing to applicant, subject property owners of and all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant to present his case.
Good evening. I'm a longtime Phoenixville resident, Washington Avenue since 2007.
Can you please restate your name?
My name is Clint Wyler. Clinton Scott Wyler. Um, I've lived on Washington Avenue since 2007 and um I've been a part of this community since then in various um formats. My partner and I, Terry Hughes, have had arcade games in various bars around town for about the last five years or so. And um we decided we want to try to do our own thing. So that's what this is. Um, we're looking to open an arcade um with pinball machines, pool tables, darts, pretty much, you know, an old school kind of arcade feel. And that would be, you know, in the old um Moose Lodge. Um, considering it's been originally the Moose Lodge, then a brewery, then the Moose Lodge again. Uh, the usage is not much different. Um, and we're not doing any type of construction whatsoever. You know, we think this will bring, this will be an additional attraction for the community. Uh, bring more people to the town and um you know, just sort of like something the town might benefit from. So that's my case.
Mr. Wyler, I I know not everyone in the public maybe has the benefit of having read your application. Could you describe exactly what you're applying for in a little detail for everybody, please?
Sure. One minute.
Sure. It would be helpful if you I I know I read it, but I I it would be helpful if you identified the location of the property, the zoning district, the section from which you're seeking uh zoning relief.
Okay, sorry. So the property is 119 South Main Street. Um, and it's identified in Chester County, tract zone TC Sounds Town Center District. As you mentioned, the South Main Properties LLC is the owner. And this is for um to use the pre-existing building as an entertainment hall with arcade games, uh various machines, pool table, console gaming, et cetera. Uh, section 27 dash 301 to A1 of the Phoenixville Borough Zoning Ordinance. And is this what you were looking for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wyler, do you have any other exhibits or witnesses that you intend to pr- present today?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Wyler, before you, if you do, before you uh exchange positions, Mr. Kajak has the opportunity to ask you any questions.
Sure.
And then uh Borough Council will have the opportunity to ask you questions.
Okay.
So my questions are geared toward him, correct, direct?
Yes, correct. The opportunity for comment will be at the end. This is just for questions for Mr. Wyler.
Okay. On the, I'm very familiar with the structure and there's very limited abilities of ADA accessibilities. Have you guys pursued any actions and or directions to make the basement ADA accessible?
If you just step up to the microphone, we have, since people are watching at home, sharing the microphone, it's fun.
We've already installed a ramp on the Hall Street entrance with the appropriate slope. So anyone that can't get in through the Main Street entrance can come to the side entrance and use the ramp.
And that was my primary question as I find this very structure very difficult to utilize and that this is an appropriate action to utilize this structure with how it is existing. It's a very odd building in town and it's very limited of what can go in on the second floor and the basement. And Moose Lodge prior existence was pretty entertaining and functional with its prior codes that existed. So utilizing a conditional use, I think it's an appropriate request.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kajak, is this a question?
That was my only question.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Wyler, could you please present your next witness? I'm sorry, Borough Council opportunity to ask questions. I have questions for you as well. Anyone on Borough Council questions?
Yes.
Kirkner?
Yes. The application says arcade slash brewery. Can you tell me about the brewery component of that?
Yeah, that is something we're looking at doing. I'm talking to a lawyer now about that. It's not yet something that we can do, but eventually we would like to do it.
So you don't have a liquor license?
No, but that's what our lawyer is, we're talking to him about.
Okay, because the application also says number of employees, total four per shift two. And then number of patrons, clients at peak operation, one hundred fifteen. Do you think two employees is going to be enough to handle one hundred or so customers?
I think two people working security is enough because, you know, the way it works is you pay at the door. Once you pay, you're in, everything's on free play. So there's not a whole lot of cash interaction after that. So we have two people basically working security.
Okay, but, but what if, what if you get a liquor license?
Well, then it would increase for sure.
Okay, well, you're not accounting for that in this application.
Okay.
So if you get a liquor license and you need more than four employees, your conditional use says, according to your application says four employees, then you would either have to come in for another conditional use to raise that or make some provisions in this application here to accommodate that. But you, but you don't know, you don't know if you're, if it's going to be a brewery at this point.
That's the plans eventually, but initially it's just going to be an arcade.
So, okay, so then if you get a liquor license.
Then we would come back in and apply for whatever use needs to be applied for.
But, but, okay, but sort of a catch-22 here. Can you get a liquor license then if you have these limits?
I don't see why not. Why, why wouldn't you be able to do that?
Because the, the conditional use, the, the use that you have that's approved, that would, if this were to be approved, that use does not accommodate.
I see what you're saying.
Brewery.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to get a lawyer for this part of the hearing as well, which I should have done in the first place and I apologize for, you know. But I understand what you're saying. It makes sense. It was a little confusing to me, the application, but I totally get what you're saying. So yes.
Mr. Wyler, if you believe that you would like to, we certainly would be willing to consider a continuance if you would like to come back with an attorney.
Can my business partner speak?
This is your application, so right now you're presenting testimony.
Okay.
If you would like to, I'll tell you what, why don't we recess your hearing, we'll move on to the other hearings and you can have an opportunity to speak to your business partner and then we can come back to you. How does that work?
Okay.
Okay.
I apologize, but thank you.
All right. So I entertain a motion to recess this hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Debbie, you want the car wash first? Yeah, okay. May I have a motion to enter into the hearing of Arnold Anderson for the car wash?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Good evening, I'm Ms. Shulsky. And Mr. Anderson, I'm going to expedite some of my introductory comments as much as possible and then turn it over to you. So we've received a conditional use application from Arnold Anderson for the property located at one thousand Schuylkill slash Nut Road, commonly known as Phoenixville Plaza. The property consists of approximately seven point zero three acres of land and is located in the borough's CD corridor development zoning district. With this conditional use application, the applicant seeks approval to develop a pad site on the tract with the Tommy's Car Wash, which requires conditional use approval pursuant to zoning ordinance section twenty-seven dash three oh one point one point two A one in order to permit automotive, automotive sales and services used to be operated. I have gone over the background of conditional use hearings and party status. Does anyone here today wish that I repeat that? Anyone online on Zoom wish that I repeat that?
If I may raise a point of water, please, or is this for the, the car wash?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because to reference the agenda, that is item three, A three. So we're, we're leapfrogging from A one to A three?
That's correct. The applicant, the applicant requested that we flip those because they believe some of the background information that they'll provide for the car wash may be helpful to hear first.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with, with no one asking me to repeat the background information on party status, is that acceptable to the applicant?
That is, thank you.
With that, does anyone request party status in this matter? All right, seeing none. I will now read the exhibits that have been marked for this application on the behalf of the borough. Exhibit B1 is the conditional use application submitted by Arnold Anderson initially received September nine, twenty twenty-two and revised resubmission received by the borough on September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B2 is the addendum to conditional use application submitted by Arnold Anderson. Exhibit B3 is a plan, two sheets entitled concept plan, prepared by Arna Engineering, Inc., dated August ten, twenty twenty-two, bearing no revisions. Exhibit B4 is the Alta NSPS land title survey, one sheet prepared, prepared by Kavanaugh Surveying Services dated December three, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit B5 is the extension of time for conditional use consent email from the applicant dated October seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B6 is a true and correct copy of section twenty-seven, three oh one, two A one of the Phoenixville Borough zoning ordinance as of the date of submission of the application. Exhibit B7 is public notice for this conditional use hearing on the aforementioned application. Exhibit B8 are copies of the public notice of tonight's hearing advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on November twenty-eight and December fifth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B9 is the proof of publication of notice from the Pottstown Mercury verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on November twenty-eight and December five, twenty twenty-two. Again, we have not yet received that proof of publication, but that will be an exhibit upon receipt. Exhibit B10, affidavit of posting at the property on December sixth, twenty twenty-two. And exhibit B11, affidavit of mailing to applicant, subject property owners different than the applicant and all property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. With that, I turn the hearing over to Ms. Shulsky.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Deborah Shulsky. I'm with the firm of Riley Viper, Han and Colle Greco here on behalf of the owner and applicant. Also with me this evening is Arnie Anderson on behalf of the owner and applicant, several other representatives from Tommy's Car Wash, who I'll introduce in a moment. And as this lister indicated, we're here tonight for your review of a conditional use approval to permit a proposed car wash pursuant to section twenty-seven, three oh one point two A one of the zoning ordinance. Hopefully you're all very familiar with this particular location, just by way of some very quick background before we get into the testimony itself. This is the former Kmart site located at one thousand Nut Road. After Kmart went into bankruptcy, the property sat vacant for a number of years. It was recently renovated for a self-storage facility building and since that time, the rest of the site has been really underutilized. So my client is looking to do a redevelopment that he thinks will revitalize this particular shopping center. There's going to be numerous improvements, some which you'll hear about this evening, including a reduction in the impervious coverage, enhanced landscaping, sidewalks and stormwater management. All of those details obviously to be addressed at the time of land development. So we'll be back before you hopefully at that time, assuming that you approve the application this evening or, you know, within the time permitted by the municipality's planning code. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to present several witnesses and we'll be able to, hopefully, I know you guys have been sitting here for a lengthy time already. We'll try and expedite it as much as possible. My first witness is going to establish the standing and give you some background as the property owner. And then we have some representatives from Tommy's Car Wash to walk you through the use itself and their site designer who can walk through the conditional use standards and confirm that it meets the applicable ordinance requirements. So with that introduction, if we could swear in, Arnie Anderson? I believe you already said your name. Can you state your business address for the record?
Yep, it's three oh nine Lancaster Ave, Suite C three in Melbourne, PA, one nine three five five.
And with whom are you employed in and what capacity?
I'm the executive vice president of Longview Management. And I'm also an agent for Nut Road LP, the owner.
And is Nut Road LP is the owner of the property, subject to tonight's hearing, correct?
Correct.
And for the borough's reference, exhibit A three is a copy of the deed evidence in that ownership. And are you authorized to act on behalf of the owner, Nut Road LP pursuant to an action of written consent dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, which is marked as exhibit A four?
Yes.
And can you explain briefly for the council what the connection is between Longview Management and Nut Road LP?
Yep, so Longview Management is the kind of the management company that manages our real estate portfolio, includes numerous shopping centers, mainly in Chester and Montgomery County. But it's the manager, Longview Management, obviously the owners, Nut Road, so.
And can you identify the location of the property, the subject to tonight's hearing, and explain what it's been used for in the past as well as its current use?
Yep, so the address is a thousand Nut Road. It's located essentially, for most people globally know it as kind of next to where the old Kmart was, next to Phoenixville Plaza. We developed it back in kind of the late nineties, like nineteen ninety-eight, developed into Kmart, which lasted up until really the bankruptcy and right around, I want to say it was like October of twenty eighteen, at one point it was sat vacant. From that point, we worked with a number of different large retailers. We're unable to get a large retailer. So we decided to convert it into self-storage, converted it to self-storage. And obviously, as many people know, self-storage has, it's a very low traffic user, very few people go there every day, so about ten to fifteen cars or trips per day. So what we're trying to figure out is kind of the best way to utilize the four hundred space parking lot.
And you understand that the redevelopment tonight, the hearing that's currently before council is for a redevelopment or car wash with subsequently after this one, the Starbucks, correct?
Correct.
And, and there'll be other witnesses that will explain the scope of the use in more detail. But from your perspective as the property owner, can you explain why you think this proposed redevelopment will be a valuable asset to the shopping center? And whether you think there'll be any negative, negative impact on the surrounding area or community?
Yep, so, so the first thing I would say, I think a car wash, a modern car wash can handle a number of cars. It's incredibly valuable for Phoenixville. As you guys may recall, when the AutoZone, there used to be two car washes in Phoenixville. There was one Charleston, one on, actually across, actually across the street from Phoenixville Plaza, plaza where the AutoZone was. When that closed, it sent pretty much everybody to the older one on Charleston Road. We think that having kind of a, a very modern, high-tech car wash can handle numerous cars without any kind of backup would really be advantageous to many residents in Phoenixville. In addition, the police department, different people. So I don't, I think it's a great thing for Phoenixville. I don't think it's going to have any negative impact on the surrounding areas, specifically as you will hear from the testimony from the car wash operators. It does, it'll be a LEED certified building. It will reuse majority of its water, so it's, it would be a very modern facility.
That's all the questions I have for this witness.
Does Borough Council have any questions for this witness?
When is the best time to talk about queuing flow sidewalks and pervious? Is that going to be presented later?
Yes.
It will be.
Yep.
Okay.
No questions?
My next witness is going to be Trevor Sperry from the Car Wash, who's going to give a little bit of background about the Car Wash. And then we'll have another witness who will talk more about the logistics of the stacking and the actual operation itself.
Yeah, Trevor Sperry, S B R R Y.
And with whom are you employed in and what capacity?
Yeah, I'm the CEO and founder, co-founder of Olympus Pines Management, which is the exclusive franchisee of Tommy's Express Car Washes for the Mid-Atlantic region.
And can you give the council a little bit of background about Tommy's Express Car Wash in terms of the company itself and some background information?
Yeah, so Tommy's Express is a third generation family-owned business that started in Michigan about fifty-five years ago. And they got into the franchising world about six or seven years ago. All of the technology is proprietary to them. The buildings that we will put on, on this property will cost us about six million dollars. We use very high technology because we try to be as green and sustainable as possible. As previously mentioned, we reclaim the majority of our water. The buildings are meant to be LEED certified. And, and the best part for, for me and for my partner is, is the jobs that we will create here. So we typically have about fifteen to twenty people on payroll at any given time. And we, you know, there will And we, you know, there will be people that work at this car wash that'll make over a hundred thousand dollars. My, my founder and I, we founded this out of business school. I grew up in a tiny town out west. Fortunately, I had some opportunities that some siblings didn't, didn't have. A lot of them worked in retail. And when my heart, my, when my partner and I were at Harvard Business School, we were talking about how we could, how we could bring better jobs to retail because retail as an industry is pretty, can be pretty rough on people, including my family growing up. My found, my co-founder is a disabled veteran. And so he was trying to find good jobs for vets. So we have programs where we employ a lot of veterans. Some of our site leaders are Purple Heart recipients. We try to give back to the community as much as we can. And Tommy's allows us to do that and encourage us to do that.
And and you mentioned generically that your, your buildings are going to be lead certified and I'm showing you an exhibit marked as exhibit A ten and is this conceptually what the prototype of most of your buildings will look like?
Yeah, that's correct. So our head of construction Ed is here. He can speak a little bit more to this, but our buildings are they're, they're, they're very nice. I think they're too expensive for the, for the business, but they're built to be very nice. It's an all glass facade on the sides. It's tempered glass on top and it's really wide, clean and airy on the inside. So most people, when they think about, you know, a tunnel car wash, they think about it's dark, it's dingy, it's wet. It can be even like a little dangerous. Cars are the exact opposite. So our, our belt system isn't even the old chain and roller where you go on and you're between the two, you know, call it pipes and there's a chain that kind of pulls you through like you're on a, on a bad Disneyland roller coaster. We have a moving walkway on the bottom, some, so it can handle high-end vehicles and handle duallys and bigger trucks. So we can service the wide range of all customers in the Phoenixville area. This model actually, we didn't know this until about a year ago, when they were designing this building. They, they wanted to design it to feel safe for specifically for women. Because they realized that most people going to car washes aren't, you know, macho men trying to wash their dirty trucks. It's actually people who were trying to vacuum out old french fries out of the car and try to get their kids' handprints off the window. And so this was designed to feel as safe and as clean as possible. And we think they've, they've done a really good job doing that.
And so the questions I have of this witness.
Any questions from council?
You may not be the appropriate person, but so this is, I believe, in the flood plain. And is right next to a creek that often overflows. So car washes use chemicals, even though you're saying this lead, what? How do you, how, can you tell us how in terms of the design of the building? It and its operation, it will be safe, particularly about flooding and so forth. If, and if you're not the right person, maybe somebody else.
Yeah, I'm not smart enough to be an engineer, but I can comment and someone can cough behind me if I'm, I'm going astray here, but I've been in enough of these to know what his answer is probably going to be, but uh, so I'm like traditional engineering where you're trying to flow everything away from the building. We do the opposite. We try to flow all of the moisture inside the building. So if you look at the, the entrance and the exit of the tunnel, it's built to be, so the water can kind of go into our own pit. We can recycle it and we can, and we can reuse it. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, perfect.
And this might be appropriate for someone else as well. What are your anticipated hours and what is your rough cost when it comes to this? You're, obviously it's an expensive investment. I just want to get an idea of what the, what you're looking for for.
Yes. So this will be a lease opportunity. So it'll just be the build costs and materials and equipment, but we'll still.
I'm sorry, just the, the hours of operation and then the, the cost for the use for the, you know, what, what?
Oh, I'm.
Car wash costs.
I was about to say six million dollars.
That's pricey.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So the hour, the hours operation are seven AM to eight PM. But they're also adapted to be local. So where we're near churches, we actually shut down on Sundays during church time. So we can be adaptable. But because it's a franchise, we're kind of required to be open at a certain time, you know, every day. And so typically seven AM to eight PM. And as far as the cost, we offer a wide variety of washes. So our lowest wash is only about eight dollars for the entire package and starts off at nineteen ninety-nine for a subscription where you can come and use it as many times you want for the entire month. For us nineteen ninety-nine. And then the top package is just thirty-nine ninety-nine.
Anyone else on council have questions? I have a couple of questions if. Don't. Okay. What is your busiest time, time of year, time of day, day of the week, that type of stuff?
Yeah, it's typically Saturdays. We've done quite a few traffic studies that they can comment on as well. But traditionally, like four to six PM after school hours as well as right after, you know, school drop-offs, but then Saturdays are our busiest day. As far as time of year is concerned, it's pretty well balanced. Summer is the kind of a lower time because people are attending, you know, they typically travel. But anytime there's pollen season, so in the spring and then a little bit in the fall and then after snows. So people trying to get salt off their car in the winter time, but it's pretty, it's pretty flat throughout the year.
So on a typical Saturday, let's say, I don't know, you said summer's slower. So the, the rest of the year, I don't know, March.
On a normal day, yeah.
Yeah. How many cars do you typically see through the car wash?
Yeah, at, at most of our locations on a weekday, it's typically about three hundred and fifty a day to four hundred. And then on weekends, it can be six to seven hundred. Our head of construction will talk more about the actual process and like the customer experience we go through. But we have these same tunnels in busier places on main highways in the country. And we can process up to three thousand cars a day without ever going back to the road. So our tunnel is built to, to go, to go very quick while still being very safe, but you, we can actually process a hundred and ninety cars an hour through our car wash. I wish that were the case and I'd pay off my student loans, but it's typically just three to three fifty a day. But, but we can process a lot more.
Okay, that's all the quick. Are there others from council?
Yes, you stated you typically have about twenty employees. Can you talk about the roles and, you know, what, what that would look like as far as job opportunities for the community?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So fifteen to twenty are typically on our payroll. We operate with between four and six at any given time. Our typical employment starts at between fifteen and seventeen dollars an hour. That's our lowest paying jobs. Going all the way up to like I mentioned seventy to eighty thousand dollars. That's before incentives. So when we created this, I, I didn't come from a lot of money, so we had to go get investor dollars, but something that was important for us is we shared a big pool of our equity and our revenue for employees. So whether you're a fifteen-year-old trying to save up for college or you want this to be your career, you'll have revenue share and you'll have also a piece of equity in the site here in Phoenixville if you work here. So those will be the people working at the window, the cashiers, for example, fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour will have some of those a bit more tech and more mechanically savvy to be, because these are, it's a lot of machines in there. They typically make seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year as a mechanic in there. And then we'll have two assistant managers and we'll have a manager. And then everyone else will just kind of be in line staff to keep everything clean. We don't. Our process is you don't get out of your car. So when you come in, you'll pull in, you'll go right through. You have the option to stay and vacuum out yourself or you can leave. Four out of every five customers just come through and leave. One out of every five will stay and vacuum out their own car. So we try to get you in and out as quickly as possible. We don't want you staying on, on the property. There's no towels, there's no rags anywhere. So it's very clean. We don't give away anything to wipe down your car and like that. And you can buy like detail kits. But we have someone going through the parking lot twice an hour, picking up all the trash and cleaning everything.
Uh, you mentioned the design of your building being intentionally designed to funnel water kind of back into the building, the recycling of the water, the lead certification. But as my colleague, Mr. Moore, mentioned, this is in an environmentally sensitive area. Is there any history of environmental issues with your company in other locations? Any mishaps that we would want to be aware of as we're considering approving something in a location such as this?
Question. We have, we have not, I can't see for other car washes and what they do and what they use, but we're, we're very deliberate in trying to be the, like the greenest car wash out there. So that, that goes to, we can get you a list if we haven't provided it, a list of all, all of the, all the, all the detergents that we use. And they're, they're, you don't want to drink it, but it's not. They, they're very clean. But outside of that, there's never been an incident that we're aware of where there's, there's been a leak or there's been any sort of spillage or anything like that. And that's partially because if you look at the way our tunnel is designed, it's, it'll be a hundred and ten feet long, but the actual machines where you were washing your car is only about fifty feet. So on both sides of the building, the majority of you're coming in, you're coming into like a safe landing. And then you're, you're, you know, there's hoses and detergents and then the blowers are blowing all of the moisture back into the tunnel. And there's another fifteen feet before you even get out of the tunnel. So it's a pretty like long runway where someone would have to go disastrous for there to be a leak out there. And I'm not aware of that ever happening. Tommy's, as a company, there's over a hundred and thirty sites open right now across the country in highly sensitive areas. As I mentioned, we try to be in city centers and, you know, we're on the Chesapeake watershed all up and down Maryland and Virginia, and we've never had any incidents.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? All right. That's it for this witness.
The next witness I would call is Ed Gilmore.
Yeah, Walter Edwin Gilmore III, last name being spelled G I L M O R E. Yes, ma'am.
And with whom are you employed in what capacity?
With Olympus Pines and I'm head of construction.
And you, you heard Mr. Sperry give some background and actually did touch on some of the operational aspects, but why don't you jump in and provide further detail on start to finish how this operates when a car comes in, whether there's any issues with stacking and how the car gets from entering to exiting the building?
And she's going to load it and I can explain it to the pictures.
Is this the video you're showing?
Yeah, just so they can see.
Okay, okay. We're low maintenance here. And just for purposes of the record, if, if Mr. Gilmore is going to be referring to this, this is exhibit A nine, which is the enlarged sketch plan prepared by.
First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I'm going to give the breakdown of how the car wash works.
I mean, just make sure you're, you're near the microphone.
I'm going to give you a breakdown of how the car wash works. And then I think that'll eliminate majority of the questions as it comes up with some that you already started asking some, Mr. Wise, as you started to ask. When you come into the car wash, we have stacking lanes. The first lane is the only lane that goes to a window where if you don't have a membership, there's somebody there that, that will help you whether you need to pay credit card cash or whatever it may be. The second lane is a tag meter. Okay. So when you come in, we have poles that read your tag that registers what car wash membership you have, goes inside, it goes in, in time with each lane, and then you'll come through. In each pay lane, you can stack about seven to eight cars depending on the length of the cars. Okay. And then in your turnaround right here, you're about five cars through the tunnel, you're another five cars. That's how we eliminate our queuing issues is at the rate of speed we put them through. From the time you come through this pace dial right here, you're an average of two minutes and ten seconds. Now, that's not a sacrifice at the wash of your car. Okay. Because most tunnels, as Trevor mentioned earlier, are your chain-driven systems, which you lose ten feet pulling you in, you lose another fifteen feet pushing you out, right? The cleanliness of your car is based on how long that soap stays on your car. Okay. And we use soaps. That's why we try not to use the word chemicals. A lot of them do use chemicals, which goes to his question earlier about how harsh it is to the community. As Trevor mentioned, all of ours are eco-friendly and we will be able to provide you guys that information with what ones we use and how eco-friendly it is. Okay. So when you come in, you go through, everybody stays in their car. We are an express car wash. Okay. So the family being third generation, what they said was what's the big holdup with the car washes? Why are people backed out to the roads? Why does it take so long? Why is it such a headache for PennDOT or whatever state we may be in for that, right? It's the washing or the, the vacuum of the car and the wiping down afterwards. We don't do that. In our car wash, we'll have about eighteen, not about, we will have eighteen blowers here. Then we have another two huge, what I call turbine engines, because that's what they look like, blowing nine hundred and fifty thousand BTUs each of heat down on your car. So we take out any wiping down of the cars. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Tell me if you need me to back up. They're blowers. Yep. Gas heated blowers. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I'll go a lot slower. I just wanted to try to get everybody out of it because I know we've been here a long time tonight. So, so with that being said, we don't wipe down the vehicles either. Okay. We, vehicles come out extremely dry. There's vacuums there. As Trevor mentioned, only about, about a one out of every five people vacuum their cars. Vacuums are there, the top of the line in the industry. They're also one of the most quiet in the industry because we have a motor at each vacuum as opposed to one on each end, causing the suctions which cause it to be very loud. Okay. With that being said, the customers have the right to come in, vacuum their vehicles. They're free for the customers. Okay. Or you can leave. At that point in time, one out of every five go to the vacuums, the other exit the vehicles. Now, to get into one of the questions of how is the building designed with everything falling into the building? Inside of the building from our outside walls in has a three-inch pitch going into a pit in the middle. That pit is where we reclaim our, all of our water used, which go out to reclaim tanks out here. There's three reclaim tanks. Okay. So the sediment drops in each one. After the third one, what we're reclaiming goes back into the system and then we use that on the mirrors down, doing the bug wash and everything of that sort. What doesn't goes in the sand oil separator and then goes back out to the city. With that being said, we have, we have trench drains here. We have trench drains right inside the tunnel right here. And we have another trench drain right here. So when you pull out of the car wash for trucks, anything that may be in the bed, it has not blown out. When you pull out, goes into that, which everything in our parking lots are sloped. Everything inward to capture every bit of water or anything on our parking lot with inside of our own facility.
Have you ever had any issues with any of the other sites? And I believe Trevor testified there's a hundred and twenty-seven nationwide that you're aware of that had any issues with queuing of vehicles backing in the streets?
No, as he mentioned and will provide a video, we had asked the franchise to put a video up on one of their most busiest roads, which was I believe a little over seventy thousand vehicles a day on their road of them doing just shy three thousand cars in a day, which they never backed up to the road at one time. It's a, it's, it's a video where just the arms are just up and down and the cars are just going through. So.
Any questions from council?
Getting slightly specific and I'm not sure if you're the one or not. So you have the, the reclamation tanks out front. How are those sealed or how they? There's always the issue of stormwater and pervious, you know, water seeping into systems. Are they a sealed unit or they?
Yes, sir. So when we put them in, they go right here in a line. Okay. They're concrete tanks. They're, I believe they're two thousand gallon tanks each one. And then the sand oil separator is a fifteen, a hundred gallon tank. So each one's a concrete, one concrete lid with a manhole for when we have to clean them out.
So stormwater won't, won't penetrate in. Okay. And how often is that oil stone separator tank cleaned out?
We clean them out. It depends on the area, right? So each area depend on if it's all pavement is clearly a lot less than a rural area where there's dirt roads or, or gravel roads and such of that sort. It's also depends on an area where there's a lot of salt. Wintertime collects a lot more because when that comes off, that grabs all the dirt and grime coming off of the street. So I would say roughly about every three months, but that's clearly area dependent. So, so if it's, you know, we have a site in Utah that gets cleared out all the time because of the salt in the air there. So it just depends on area dependent, but the more, the better for us because it just keeps the flow of everything flowing.
So this would be a fixed maintenance schedule?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's see, I have one quick question. So about the vacuums. So on the busiest day, like what's the queuing like for the vacuums? If one, five people are stopping to vacuum, like how often, if you have three hundred and fifty cars, how often is that all filling up or how do they interact with that area?
So when you think of three hundred and fifty cars, think of three hundred and fifty cars from seven in the morning to eight at night, right? Not all at one time. So I can tell you this, out of all the sites we've been on, people love our vacuums, people use our vacuums, but I've never. but I've never seen every single vacuum taken. Um, again, that's part of also having the best vacuums in the industry, because when when the suction's good and you're getting that dirt out of there, it's also part of our process of getting rid of there on a fast pace and everything. So out of all the sites I've been on, I've never seen every vacuum stall taken. Um, and and on this one, I want to say uh, with the amount we have here, most, most sites average around twelve uh, give or take, and this one, I believe, is a little bit over that, and and so therefore I haven't seen um, all of them ever taken off at one time.
Any further questions from counsel?
And then would you be the the witness to uh, ask questions about for internal sidewalk connections and things of that nature? Is that someone else? That's one, okay?
All right, I think that's all all we have for this witness.
My other witness of was gonna testify with the Starbucks, but he would be the one to answer the question about the sidewalks. If you want, I can call him up now or we can wait till the Starbucks and.
I'm happy combining my questions for when it comes to for that, because uh, most of my questions will be uh, will be pertinent to both items.
I I think you should answer questions regarding the Tommy's car wash.
Okay, I'll listen to my solicitor.
Yeah, just to make sure we have a somewhat clean record.
Okay. Next witness is gonna be Steven. Thank you, because I was not gonna be able to pronounce that. And with whom are you employed in what capacity?
I work for Penoni Associates, and I'm a design.
And is your credentials, educational background set forth in your CV, which is marked as exhibit A eight? And have you testified in a number of municipal proceedings and been considered an expert in those proceedings?
Yes, I have.
Wasn't, unless the board has any questions, I wasn't gonna go through all of his credentials since it is included in the CV. We would request that he be accepted as an expert in design, engineering, or or site design.
Any objections? No, so certified.
And you're familiar with the subject property, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I I believe we're providing details under other witnesses, I don't wanna be too redundant with respect to the existing conditions and and the proposed conditions for this site. But could you generally walk the board through the site plan? And provide any details about the site plan itself that you think may not have been covered by some of the other witnesses?
Sure, yeah, so the the existing conditions on the site, it's the hundred thousand square foot old Paymark site that's now converted to self-storage. Uh, we're located in the rear of the site and have access through Nut Road. Rear circulation was mentioned by Ed, my associate. Uh, but you go through the northern property of the site. Make a left through there, um, turn into the the initial pay lane and then go through the two pay lanes there. Circulate through the tunnel and up through the parking. There's four to ten equal uh, parking spaces on site currently. Uh, it's heavily impervious and has many parking spaces and parking islands. There is also loading days on the south side of the Paymark, uh, which is on the other side of the property. And in the proposed conditions, it's a four thousand five hundred square foot, one tunnel car wash. Uh, it's on a about an acre pad site on an northern portion, portion of the seven acre parcel. As I mentioned, the access is from Nut Road. And uh, we're maintaining the existing certain uh, for the most part. And that's the way in the northern portion, maintaining access in the rear.
And you heard Tommy's representative describe the circulation pattern in terms of how the cars will access the building and how stacking will be handled? And do you agree, uh, based on that testimony, your understanding of of how this site will work, that there will be, that the stacking will be adequately handled with the proposed a layout?
Yes.
Will there be any, will the proposed redevelopment increase the impervious surface on the property?
It will not, we are actually adding more pervious surface uh, as the councilman, uh, councilperson mentioned. We are in flood plain, but we are increasing the pervious amount of uh, grass area, which will help you know, have better conditions for stormwater in the area.
And obviously, stormwater management will be addressed at the time of land development, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Um, are you familiar with the applicable conditional use standards set forth in section twenty-seven dash nine oh five point A of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And you believe that the application complies with those applicable standards?
Yes, the uh, comprehensive comprehensive plan uh, complements.
And I'm just gonna walk you through a few of those very quickly. Um, and in your opinion, is the property suitable for the proposed use and consistent with the objectives and policies of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Um, do you believe that the proposed use would be adverse to the impact um, of the of the neighborhood?
No, the the use would be associated with the corridor developing zone.
And is the road designed adequate? Um, and will there be traffic generated from the proposed use that will lower the level of service at any nearby intersections below a acceptable level of service?
So the level of service will um, still be maintained. The existing Paymark parking lot was heavily trafficked um, with the proposed use that we're proposing here, we're introducing less traffic.
Um, are there any residential districts surrounding the property that would require screening from issues?
Oh, no.
Does the fire department have the ability to provide adequate fire protection and emergency services for the property?
Yep, yes, the proposed use is less intensive than Paymark, uh, providing access through internal driveways. I don't know, there's access throughout the uh, all four sides of the the car wash building.
And is adequate water and sewer service available for the property?
Yes.
And you already testified that stormwater management will be um, sufficiently accommodated at the time of land development, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Questions from counsel?
Uh, yes, a couple questions. I'm referencing the conditional use application document and page which shows the layout of page seven. It shows the entire layout of this property and the proposed Starbucks. I'm uh, interested in understanding the traffic flow off of Nut Road into the development. And then there's a essentially a a four-way intersection there. One that leads the to, if you're coming in, going to the right, you're heading toward uh, the Dollar Store, Giant, and so forth. Then behind those that road buildings and then into the new development. So do you envision putting any kind of traffic control, stop signs or 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 what have you? At that, at that location, because that I I live around the corner and I use this, look, I drive in and out of that driveway already, and it's fair, it can be fairly busy at a lot of different times of day, including the times of operation. So uh, in terms of circulation, what what's your, what's your understanding?
Yeah, so that internal intersection there, there's four points of contact. We would be interested in uh, putting a stop sign on that uh, left-hand side. We're not, I personally am not designing the entirety of the site, I'm just focused on the Tommy's express car wash. But uh, that's what we plan on doing.
And so then, after one goes through the car wash to exit after you've done it, and if you're not using the vacuums, you're driving past the vacuums, and then if you're leaving the property, you're taking right back up the road. Is that the, how you exit, Tommy?
Yes, you exit from the tunnel on um, I guess the portion here, where you can, you're traveling north, and you can either take a left or a right outside out to to get back into the internal access um, and get throughout and then out of the parcel. Is that answered your question?
Uh, yes, so then you're really only having one look at your, the design entry off of the Nut Road, if you're going to Tommy's. It's a single lane wide to get into the property, but also a single lane wide to get into the other new development. So there's, although I guess that the diagram does show two-way traffic there.
Yeah, the the rear access aisles are very deep wide, it does show both door, uh, both two-way traffic. So you do have the option to go right out of the the tunnel uh, and that address out of the tunnel, or take a left. And then get back into the internal access area.
Right, does, that's.
Any other questions from counsel?
I just had a question about the landscaped areas that you have uh, displayed up here. So it looks like those will be like grass areas. And then some of the renderings, it's all pavement, so. And then I didn't see any calculations on the reduction in impervious, but I think that's really important, and we'd like to know, you know, just how much of a reduction there is in impervious and that we are to the max reducing as much as we can, given the opportunities we're given here.
Uh, so to answer your first question in regards to landscaping, this is just a concept, so it's just showing grass areas in that uh, pattern. Uh, we have fully determined what other shrubs or trees that we place on the site. Uh, so that's still up for design. And then to uh, answer your second question, uh, suppose, please, sorry.
Uh, that we are reducing the impervious to the max that we can, given the site restrictions.
Yeah, so we we are increasing the surface for the smaller area, and um, it, I don't have the exact number, but we are increasing it and uh, I mean decreasing, sorry, decreasing the impervious area and increasing the impervious area.
And then just a follow-up question, so I just wanted to be clear that that, it is the intention in this concept that those areas will all be landscaped and not paved like some of the renderings we have here. Like the landscaped areas there in between the concrete curbs. It had the hash, it says landscaped on the map, it says, or on the plan.
Yes.
Proposed landscape area, those would not be paved like they are in the renderings. Uh, well, we have another one in our package that has a yellow building in the background. Not that one.
Well.
It's just, we have a a concept.
I don't know that that rendering, I don't recognize that building in the background there. I don't know that that re- rendering actually shows the location.
No, it says a concept, but I just wanted to be clear that that wasn't gonna be pavement in those areas that are on the plan and say it's landscape.
Mr. Cromanito, are you referring to applicant's exhibit ten?
No, I'm not. It's M one red panel.
He's looking at my computer right now.
Uh, maybe it's in the conditional, conditional use application, I'm sorry. I'm referring to the conditional use application.
And if you can just use the microphone, I'm sorry, carry that with you.
So I'll explain the landscape area and what we propose in the sections. Um, so like I said, the dotted uh, areas are landscape. And the surrounding portions of the building are sidewalk and have impervious surface, but there are you know, spaces within the surrounding area that we do put bushes and shrubs and trees and things of that nature.
Thank you.
And so would you be the witness to discuss things like sidewalks and other things?
I'm gonna call Arnie up real quick, and I'm gonna ask him a question, hopefully this addresses it. Would you be agreeable?
Were we?
Should the board?
Counsel finished asking questions of that witness? I I I had some questions for that witness, I don't know if anyone else.
Well, well, my question was just whether he was the one for sidewalks or not. He's not.
But.
Okay, so we'll go back to Scott to to ask questions of this witness.
Sorry about that.
Okay, um, but I'm sorry, are you the person to to address circulation?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the way the uh, circulation is designed, it appears that if you want to enter the queue for the car wash, you would be entering the site from Nut Road, taking a left at that four-way internal intersection. And then basically hanging a double right. And then as you're exiting, I expect a lot of people will probably come out of the exit, turn right, and then turn right again to proceed back to Nut Road. That appears to potentially cause some conflict when you have people en- entering the site, taking that left, and then people coming down the internal driveway, straight back to Nut Road, which potentially would be eliminated if the entrance and exit were swapped. And I was wondering if there was consideration of swapping that for ease of traffic flow internal to the site.
Um, we we looked at a few different concepts of this design, and you know, we felt that was best to bring traffic into Nut Road.
Can you hold the microphone? I'm sorry, it's a pain, but we have folks at home and we're doing the hybrid and keeping everybody safe, so they gotta hear it.
Yeah, so it was the best design to allow traffic to come through the internal driveway here, turn right into the pay lanes, and then have the exiting traffic north into this large thirty-foot accessway here. Um, and then have the option to either go left or right. You know, right, possibly using the vacuum stalls or left, if they don't really need to use them, they can use this internal accessway, which kinda help, which helps separate the traffic from each exiting point.
The majority of the traffic would be presumably going to the right as they leave the car wash, is that the understanding?
No, no, it could go either way, depending on if they're using the vacuum stalls. It really depends on the the user or customer.
Okay, thank you.
And then I, I had follow-up questions on toward the layout design. I um, and I understand this may be the best fit for the location from the, from the um, design standpoint, but just for for the purpose of discussion, the 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 self-storage building as it's currently stands at any point, sixty days notice, and it can be something else. Uh, that's the beauty of some of these storage units is, you know, it's not a long-term lease facility. If that other site is developed, my concern would be future uh, considerations for traffic flow. Uh, if you were then to put another pad site or um, if that building could be rehabbed and then used, and you have a weird entrance at the face of a building. As its current use, it makes sense, because it's, it's just a box. Going forward, it it presents a a potential for a future issue is my concern. Is there any, uh, is there any way to realign that? The 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 idea that I was mulling over was if you could actually pare off those lanes, so that uh, instead of the entrance facing um, what is the self-storage building, it actually pairs up going north instead of going west. Uh, the entrance lane again.
Yeah, I mean, like we considered many options for this layout, uh, with the best one being entrance of the pay lanes being on this side of of the site. And I think what's really beneficial is the car exit, which goes north to the rear access lane. Flipping the side or changing up the entrance or.
Well, well, not not switching them, but just moving the entrance lane to run in parallel to the exit lane. Potentially.
That that could be an option, uh, but we think it's important to to have traffic go into the rear access lane, which is larger, it's thirty feet, we can control that depth of, or the the width of that. Having traffic exit into the the internal accessways is what we want to avoid. We keep everything centrally located within our portion.
Okay, I don't think there's any further questions for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more for Arnie, unless you guys somewhere. Would you be agreeable, should this board uh, vote favorably on this app- application to accept the condition of approval that you would provide sidewalks along the internal access road on the portion of the property, obviously that's within Phoenixville Borough?
Yes.
And to be further determined at the time of land development and designed at that time, correct?
Correct.
And so that would be for consideration of of any of the sections for sidewalk. So along the the main entrance road, and and I don't know what to call the other access. So along the, the main entrance road and, and I don't know what to call the other access road, the one that is running west, but, um, for consideration on, on. Along the current access road alongside where Starbucks would be, and then along the north side of where Tommy's would be is. The ones I just want to clarify is being potential locations for future discussion at land development.
Do you have a pointer?
We do.
So the, you're saying along here, correct?
Uh, running east-west, uh, pri- primarily.
So along here.
Correct. And then also running north-south along the, the existing drive, uh, where there would be alongside where Starbucks is. Which also dances into Schuylkill Township, I understand that, but is predominantly Phoenixville Borough.
Okay, so I, I think, um, I mean, we can discuss a little more in the Starbucks discussion, but I think, we think we're absolutely open to have sidewalks along here. And we've talked, uh, with borough staff about having connection to the trail behind here. So, so having a connection here. Across here and then expanding, uh, this sidewalk, um, to make it more, um, bike friendly. So eventually the, the goal with, for the borough staff is to be able to have a connection from here all the way over to the Schuylkill River Trail, essentially to the French Creek Trail. So, so we're, I think we're open to having sidewalks here, um, and obviously here, and then expanding this one. I think the sidewalk. Along here probably does not make sense, um, for a variety of reasons. Just, and I, again, I'm not an expert, so I'm pure, purely a developer. So, um, but for the most part, I mean, people are not, um. Well, wha- uh, Tommy's is not, doesn't have any, again, as, um, Trevor testified, their goal is to keep everybody in the cars. There, there's not really a reason to have a sidewalk, um, to a drive, to drive through lane effect effectively. Um, so I think we would be open to have a, um, sidewalk along here, although we will have probably some additional sidewalk access into the Starbucks.
So I, I understand that it may s- sound silly of requesting a sidewalk alongside a car wash. I get that. Cause it does seem that way. My, my thought is, again, the, the self-storage building could, uh, in the future not be self-storage. Having access for both, uh, employment and, I mean, because it's, you're not walking through a car wash, I get it. But, um, employees walk into car, to, to cubes, to the self-storage building, um, employees walk into the car wash potentially. It, it provides a route that's outside of travel lanes. It's a minor modification. Um, but I, I know it's an internal modification and we, we don't address that, but in any other situation, we would be putting a sidewalk there.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, so to try to respond to your first point, so with regards to the, the use of the Kmart, whether it could change. I mean, uh, so the history of this used to be assembled, it was like nine parcels and it got assembled. So it was formerly like a, uh, Greenways Technology Park, which was a. Fairly large, like a 60,000 square foot industrial building here. And there was a little building here, I made something over here. So as with all land in the borough, it does tend to change over time. Um, I think with specifically the self-storage. I, so I both, I'm represented as the agent for Nut Road and also the president, the general partner. We, we have no intention of changing it from self-storage to something else. Um, as you guys may recall, that is not a, uh, the zoning change from MG to CD. So it's not a, uh, it's not a buy rate use. So if we change any of it, we lose that right. So unless self-storage becomes unviable, we're not planning to change it. Um, and if it does become viable, we'd probably be going, trying to do residential here or something alternative at that point. Um, just because what we've seen over the last number of years is, uh, retail has definitely changed and these very deep buildings for like 300 some feet deep. Are incredibly expensive to try to split and get smaller retailers in or just, it typically is just not financially feasible to do. So I guess to, to answer the last part, I think, let me talk to our, um, civil after this about figuring out to make additional sidewalk connections in the site. To best, to best, um, kind of respond to your, your comment. So.
So good.
No, I, so yeah, and then just the one other comment, you guys talked about the circulation. We, uh, we spent, um, a tremendous amount of time with, on different layouts to try to get this layout to work best. One of the things just to keep in mind, this was a Kmart, so it did have, uh, significantly more traffic than it. What it's called, we'll have in the future with both these uses, but one of the things we all have to be cognizant of is this entrance, it's a blind curb. So we really want to dissuade people from taking a left in here as much as possible, um, because this is, you can't see the elevation change here. So I keeping this as the center part for circulation is incredibly important just for the, for the safety of what is called, uh, patrons. Of all the uses.
And so again, I, I, knowing that. It could be a self-storage spot for the next thousand years, that's fine, but, um, it might not be. So I, I would like to, to, um, and. Uh, during construction, land development is the most affordable, logical time to do a sidewalk on all fronts. So I, I would like to have that, you know, as a consideration for the. Uh, for the land development, because it, it is something that, uh, between workforce access, everything else, people coming through there, uh, keeping them out of lanes of travel. There, there would be no other way to traverse this property, uh, internally. So.
Yeah, I, I think that my last final comment, I think, what we, I think would, the main thing we need to get, uh, for this to make sure we have. What it's called, access, safe access for anybody, any employees for the car wash to get from either a different parking lot or get from the bus station. So I think we can probably save actors down here, across, over here and into the car wash. Hope, hopefully that is at least a stepping stone, uh, for this. So, um, and just to keep for the self-stores, there's, um, only one employee there at any one time. So.
And the other thing to keep in mind too is most likely, likely if this use were to change in the future, um, it, it would most likely require either. Conditional use or land development, at which time it would be back before council to discuss, you know, the specifics of internal circulation and. And, uh, pedestrian connections at that time as well.
But, but the best time to make a pedestrian connection is at the time of construction. Um, so I would like to see pedestrian connections be made. And I, the applicant did mention the SEPTA use. Oh, is there SEPTA consideration currently, uh, understanding that SEPTA is looking to modify and improve service through this area? Is there commitment to improving and creating SEPTA facilities?
Ye- yes, so we, we do have, it's not on this plan, but there's, we are planning to do a SEPTA bus station here. So, or bus stop. So one of the enclosures. And, and we've, we've talked about this in the past. Um, and I think we mentioned this when we, when I was in front of you guys for the Bank of America. Um, so it's be a SEPTA bus shelter. So it'd be right here.
And just for the record, when you say right here, i- it's in the vicinity of the parking lot for the Dollar Tree, is that correct?
No, so it's right along kind of the main access. So there's, so the actual bus stop is along, I think along Nut Road, but typically the bus stops right here. Um, so it's right along the sidewalk. So, so if this is Queen appliance, so it's right in this, um, grass area where the sidewalk is.
Okay, I can attest the bus commonly stops right where he's indicating.
Okay, um, and if. Council determines that, uh, the installation of that bus stop would be a condition of granting your conditional use, uh, application. Would that be a condition you'd be amenable to?
Yes.
And, and that would be in the Phoenixville Borough portion of the property, not Schuylkill Township.
Correct, there would only be the Phoenixville Borough portion, which is fortunately.
I apologize, I, we, we don't do a lot of conditional use hearings, so I don't know all the ins and outs, but, um. Uh, this will require traffic study as it's going to be generating additional traffic. During that time, I imagine our traffic engineer could provide. Sorry, good.
You know, so it may, may not, so we, we'll have a truck engineer study, but we already had traffic reports done for the Kmart. So typically in these situations, what we do is we have traffic engineer provide a report looking at projected traffic. Um, that will be generated by these new uses compared to what was generated by, uh, the previously approved plan with the Kmart. And then we will present that to the township engineer for their review. We don't typically do a new traffic study, um, if we have existing traffic. But yes, we, we will study these uses specifically and have a traffic letter prepared, um, for review by the township.
I, so that my point was going back to SEPTA more importantly than, than traffic counts. Um, if, if you're a traffic engineer or traffic engineer were to determine a better location for that SEPTA location. Would you be amenable to a different spot within Phoenixville Borough boundaries within your property? Cause I'm looking at this and, and what I'm thinking is I don't want SEPTA stopping the bus where you have X number of cars coming through.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just, I'm not looking for you to commit to it being on that access road, but within your development, within the circulation route in a logical location as determined by. Traffic engineer, et cetera.
Yeah, I think we're absolutely open to looking to alternate locations. It will be dependent on, uh, the rights of other tenants and, and different parties.
Of course.
So, so yes, we're, we are open to.
I want, I want the best option, not just, well, it stops here now. I don't, you know, I just want to make sure we're, we're working towards the best stop, not just where it currently is.
Yeah, we've, um, we actually have a proper project in Limerick Township. We were, we moved, actually with the final land development plan for that, we just moved. A bus shelter, what, 50 yards-ish to meet, uh, SEPTA's requirements. So.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have. We just requested our, um, exhibits be, that our exhibits be, um, uh, accepted into the record.
They're all accepted. Um, at this time, we would accept, uh, public comment. Anyone from the public who wishes to, uh, make a statement or give their opinion on this development may now approach. Please provide your name and address, uh, and you can make your comment.
So Lisa Longo, I live in Phoenixville Borough. As I was listening, I just have a couple of questions and I hope council will consider asking them. I don't know that you need to answer them tonight. Of the total jobs that you're talking about, how many would be at $20 an hour? How many at a more livable wage? At $20 an hour, and that was at the high end of their hourly, how many of these jobs are full-time with benefits, including retirement and healthcare? $20 an hour, if you work 40 hours a week is $800 a week. That comes out to $41,600 a year. Take off 20% for taxes, you're now at $33,280. Divide that by 12, you're at $2,773 a month.
Ma'am, I apologize, but your comment needs to be applicable to the zoning conditional use conditions.
I mean, it's applicable to, can council, do you want to approve something that's going to create jobs where people can't afford to live in Phoenixville?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. That, your point is understood and relevant to the general community, however, is not relevant to this particular zoning application.
So when does that conversation happen?
That conversation would happen with your council members outside of this hearing.
I'll follow it up. Thank you.
Any other public comment or opinions on this application before us? Uh, seeing none, any final statements from the applicant? Yes, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Stevens, President of Coverbridge Crossing, legit right across the street from this, that's why it's kind of hitting hard, um. Traffic-wise, you're saying how you have it monitored from Kmart. Um, is that the only way that you are going off of that is one of my questions?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, this is comment and opinion period.
Oh, so no question. So I was talking, so I wasn't.
No, not a problem. Um, but unfortunately, no questions can be asked at this time, just comments and opinions.
Okay, well then, my comment and opinion is, I don't think this is a good idea. Um, me and notice are already too busy. It takes me, I live at Coverbridge. Um, just to get across a street, it takes me 10 minutes. I could just imagine what this is under due to the traffic and safety of, there's already so many accidents on that one road. Me alone, I've been in that, so I know what it's like. So in my opinion, I do not think this is a good idea.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or opinions from the public? All right, seeing none, I'm sorry. Uh, any final comment from that, um? I'm sorry, we have a, uh, public comment virtually.
Ms. Vernola, your microphone is unmuted.
Um, yes, I'm sorry. Is, is this also about the Starbucks that I could ask about, or is this a combined?
No, this is just about the car wash at this time. The next hearing will be about the Starbucks.
Okay, I was just concerned about the cars as far as like the traffic with both locations. So should I save that for the next?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment, virtually or in person? Okay, I apologize. Now, applicant, any final comments?
I, just in closing, I, I wanted to just state that as the solicitor indicated in the very beginning of this hearing. And as I'm sure the council is well aware, conditional use is essentially a permitted use, subject to compliance with the specific ordinance standards. There are no specific standards governing this particular use. There, what I call your, um, general health, safety and welfare standards that I went through. Um, that I went through with, with the, uh, design engineer, um, specifically that the use is appropriate. The fact that it is permitted by conditional use means that it's inherently a beneficial use, um, to the community. And we believe that, given this, the fact that this is a redevelopment, it was previously approved for Kmart, which generated significantly more traffic than the proposed use. Um, that it meets all the applicable standards of the conditional use, um, for purposes of the board approving this application. In addition. My client has agreed to certain conditions of approval should the board grant this application, including. Providing sidewalks to be further discussed and defined at the time of land development. Also, as was mentioned in the testimony. This, um, development is going to result in a reduction in the amount of impervious coverage. It's going to provide for additional landscaping, again, to be designed at the time of land development and stormwater management. So, uh, we believe that the use is appropriate and that it meets all the applicable ordinance standards and should be granted by this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it is my understanding that, uh, council typically takes these matters under advisement. And renders their decision at a following meeting. Uh, i- is that? Am I correct? Does council agree? Um, with that, uh, this hearing will be continued until January 10th, 2023. At 7:00 PM, uh, at which meeting council will render its decision.
Can I make one? It may be 6:00 PM at the January meeting.
Well, let, let's continue it until 7:00. If we need to wait until 7:00 to hear it, we'll do that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I would entertain a motion to resume the. 119 South Main Street, is that addressed correct?
Yes.
Uh, South Main Street, uh, conditional use application.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're resuming, uh, Mr. Wyler's conditional use application. Uh, Mr. Wyler, I understand that you have a request.
Yeah, we'd just like to ask for a continuation. Return with legal counsel and potentially make amendments to our application.
Understood. Is that, that acceptable to council? Yes, the continuance is granted until January 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. You need a motion. And, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing on, uh, 119 South Main Street.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to open the hearing. On 1,000 Schuylkill slash Nut Road, considering a restaurant drive-through.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I will go through the. All right, so I will go through the, uh, introduction as quickly as possible. Uh, this, the borough has received a conditional use application from Arnold Anderson. The application concerns the property located at one thousand Scoogle slash Nut Road, as well as a portion of the property located in Scoogle Township at one seventeen Scoogle Road. The property, the portion of the property located in Phoenixville Borough, is approximately seven point zero three acres of land and is located in the borough's C D corridor development zoning district. Good chair, thank you. Um, the applicant seeks approval to develop a pad site on the track, with a Starbucks coffee shop restaurant, which requires conditional use approval pursuant to zoning ordinance section twenty-seven dash three oh one, point one, point two, A one, in order to permit a restaurant drive-through used to be operated. The nature of a conditional use application is that a conditional use is technically a permitted use under the zoning ordinance, and certain conditions must be met in order to engage in that use. The applicant will present its case first and has the burden of proof. The board can ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. Any parties will also be given a chance to ask questions. After the applicant is finished with the case, any parties may present their own evidence. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, there will be an opportunity for anyone in the audience to make a statement, or for or against the application. You do not need to be a party to express your opinion during the comment period, but you do need to be a party in order to ask questions of the applicant. With regard to becoming a party on this matter, party status is optional. Um, there are certain qualifications, however, to party status, and it is necessary that, you be what the municipality's planning code calls an affected or aggrieved party. That is someone who could actually be impacted positively or negatively. If you wish to become a party, you would be subject to cross-examination from the applicant, as to whether or not you live close enough. Is there anyone here who wishes to become a party to this matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name and address.
Elizabeth Stevens, residence of Coverbridge Crossing.
And Ms. Stevens, how far away do you live from the property?
Potsboro, about three minutes.
Could you estimate how many feet away? A mile? Uh, a mile?
Half a mile.
Okay. Does the applicant have any voir dire?
I don't have any voir dire, but I really would like to just preserve an objection on the record, just, um, given the proximity, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's half a mile or a mile. I know the case law is generally anything over a half mile isn't, sufficient to be in close proximity to establish standing, and also just, um, to have a better understanding of what the aggrieved interest is in the application. So, I, I'm fine with, um, with her, you know, asking questions or, or participating, but I would like to just preserve an objection on the record.
So preserved. Before I turn it over to the applicant, I'll mark the borough's exhibits. I'm sorry, do we have someone, uh, virtually who is interested in party status?
Yes.
Please provide your name and address for the record.
Laura Vernola, two oh three Bridge Street. Uh, I own Steel City Coffee House and Brewery.
Uh, can you please estimate how far from the project you, your property is?
It's about a half a mile.
Would the applicant like to ask any questions of Mr. Verdella?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Would you like to ask questions?
Uh, I, I, I don't. I would, again, just like to lodge the same, uh, objection, just to preserve my objection on the record.
Understood, so preserve. Um, so I will now mark the borough's exhibits. Uh, exhibit B one, conditional use application submitted by Arnold Anderson, initially received September ninth, twenty twenty-two, and revisory submission by the borough, s- received by the borough on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B two, addendum, the conditional use application. Exhibit B three, planned two sheets entitled concept plan prepared by Arna Engineering dated August tenth, twenty twenty-two, bearing no revisions. Exhibit B four, Alta slash N S P S land title survey, one sheet prepared by Kavanaugh Surveying Services dated December third, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit B five, extension of time for conditional use consent email from applicant dated October seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B six, true and correct copy of section twenty-seven, three oh one, two A one of the Phoenixville Borough zoning ordinance. Exhibit B seven, public notice for this conditional use hearing. Exhibit B eight, copies of the public notice that were advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on November twenty-eighth and November fifth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B nine, proof of publication of the advertisement from the Pottstown Mercury on said dates. Uh, again, we don't not have that yet, but that will be an exhibit when received. Exhibit B ten, affidavit of post, posting at the property on December sixth, twenty twenty-two. And exhibit B eleven, affidavit of mailing to application, applicant, subject property owners of, different than the applicant and all property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
And good evening again. For the record, my name's Deborah Schulsky with the firm of Riley, Viper, Hall and Kyle Greco, here on behalf of the owner and the applicant. Also with me this evening is Arnie Anderson, on behalf of the owner applicant, and our civil engineer, um, Anon Bat. And as this listener indicated, we're here tonight, uh, for your review of conditional use application to permit a proposed, a restaurant with a drive-through, a property that contains an existing shopping center. Um, I apologize if some of this is redundant. I know you just sat through our, other lengthy hearing, but just for purposes of the record, since this is a separate application, it's the property that was formerly occupied by the Kmart, is currently a self-storage facility, and my client is intending to redevelop it for purposes of a, uh, proposed Starbucks with a drive-through. As I mentioned in the other application, the proposal will have significant benefits in terms of, production and impervious coverage, um, improvements to landscaping, um, improvements to sidewalk connection and stormwater management, all of which will be fully designed should the board grant this application at the time of land development. And with that introduction, I have two witnesses this evening I'll call. The first one, be Arnie Anderson, and then the second one will be our civil engineer.
Please re swear, yeah.
And I think because of the fact that we do have parties, I was going to suggest incorporating some of the prior testimony, but I think I can quickly go through it if the, council has an objection to that. Bless you.
Let me ask, Ms. Stevens, do you have any objection to incorporating the background from the previous hearing into this hearing? Uh, that was no objection. I know she wasn't on the microphone, but, um, and, Ms. Vernola, uh, do you have any objection to incorporating the background from the previous hearing into this hearing?
And when I say the background, typically talking about the standing, hi- his, um, authorization to proceed, that who the landowner is, um, that he's permitted pursuant this to the consent, document and some of the other background that he provided with respect to, existing use, the prior use and the history of the shopping center generally.
Ms. Vernola, do you have any objection to incorporating that background into this hearing?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Anderson, I just cut off, cut, cut out a lot of your testimony here. Um, you understand that the application this evening is for a proposed Starbucks, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and, um, the civil engineer is going to explain in more detail the propos- proposal in terms of the size and the drive-through. Um, but I did want to ask you a little bit about just conceptually what the Starbucks is going to look like aesthetically. And I do have an exhibit marked as A nine, which is a conceptual building rendering, which I believe was part of your, um, addendum to the application, and is that a accurate depiction of generally what the building is proposed to look like?
Y- yes, so that's the accurate depiction. The only thing that could change is if Starbucks changes their prototype within the next six months, but that is their current prototype. I think the closest one that you guys may have seen is one in Malvern, um, kind of close to two, two.
And do you know what the hours of operation are, um, specifically in the morning when the store opens?
Uh, yes, it's typically from about five thirty A M to eleven P M at night.
And are you, would you be agreeable should the board grant this application that there would be no speakers used for the drive-through from, um, eleven P M to five thirty A M?
Yes.
And in your opinion, um, and your experience in redevelopment of shopping centers, do you believe that the proposed Starbucks will, um, have a positive value to the shopping center?
Yes, I, I mean, typically, um, I think, uh, when you look at shopping centers, um, a lot of times the, uh, tenants will look for a very, uh, kind of known name brands on pad tenants, and that typically drives a lot of traffic to centers. Um, so Starbucks is one of those names that will bring, um, both additional traffic, but also additional retailers to, kind of the inline shops at Phoenix Plaza.
And do you believe that the proposal will create any adverse impact to any of the immediately surrounding areas?
No, I do not.
That's all the questions I have.
Borough council have any questions for this witness?
I, in, because we brought it up in the last one, uh, just for the record to discuss tonight on this one, in terms of internal sidewalk connections, septic bus connections, and other, uh, commitments to improvements, um, uh, in the, in the, during the land development phase. That was a question truncated, but.
I understood.
Sorry, Gail.
Be agreeable, should the board grant this application to accept in a, a condition of approval, that the applicant would provide, um, sidewalks within the boundaries of the, uh, borough, in the areas that you previously testified to?
Y- yes, w- with, with regards to within, uh, obviously entities that we have control or affiliates, in all such situations, unless there's, uh, true adverse effect to another, um, entity, that I may be the president general partner, but they are solely different investors. So, yes, a- as much to, to, as much as we can, so.
Um, I have a couple, oh, I'm sorry, are there other council questions? No, you go before me.
Uh, yeah, I, I have concerns about, uh, the, uh, amount of, uh, cars that may queue up in a drive-through kind of scenario, especially in the morning hours. Um, so I wonder if you have any, um, uh, numbers that you can share with us about how the capacity, uh, to queue cars within, uh, the layout that you have, uh, throughput, anticipated volumes, any information that you have there that may assuage my, deep, deep concerns about backups of traffic affecting a broader area than just, you know, the, the parking lot of the specific, uh, location.
Yeah, so I think, um, so I'll give you the two-second overview. Um, Anon Bat, Bat, our civil will be best to ask those questions, because, I'm not an engineer, he's an engineer. Um, but so the, so the one nice thing about how this is laid out specifically is, um, most, a, a lot of, um, townships are specifically concerned about backing up to major roads or major, um, kind of through ways of, traffic in shopping centers. What's nice about how this one specifically skewed is, um, it comes obviously off Nut Road, straight down from across from Wawa, you're going to take a left end, you take another left end, you had to come all the way back down, and then queue here. Um, so for it to back up to, um, negatively impact, both Nut Road, um, and even this, I mean, it's, it's, uh, on and will be able to exactly number of cars, but it's, um, I mean, it's probably twenty cars, twenty-five cars, so it's, it's, it's a significant amount of stacking potentially within the site. Which is better than, um, a lot of other Starbucks you see that are kind of right on the road, um, without kind of the additional internal circulation which you can stack as well. So.
I was just going to say thank you. Please, Mr. Yewell.
On the question of queuing, um, and this is just something we've seen with other applicants in town and, and, um, the, the other tenant that's at the Malvern location, uh, there's been a, a, a trend to go to a double queue that then goes to a single pickup. Is this a site that you're looking to do that? Would that be, uh, in the final design? Is that something that would alleviate further queuing, or is there not room in the footprint for, um, for, for a double queue, a single line?
So I have, um, I would have to ask Starbucks if they would do a double drive-through. We, um, I don't believe they would here, based on the design ad. I'm not sure if they are doing too many double drives to the current time, um, but I would have to a- ask Starbucks corporate to see, um, if they're doing that and whether they think it would be needed here, so.
I, I would be interested in finding that out. Just as we've seen other locations, it does seem to help, uh, mitigate, lengthy queue lines, and that is obviously going to be a concern. Uh, that I think the Malvern location handles it well, but other locations in the area have not done well. Uh, and so we want to make sure we're doing the best.
Completely understand.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Kirk.
I have, uh, just, just for our edification on this rendering, could you show us where, the, the drive-up window is?
So, I, well. I, I, I'm in, so our civil walks through all, where the pickup, the drive-through, what, uh, window is, but, um, I, I'm not going to guess, I don't, it has, I can't see exactly.
Okay.
So.
Cause I.
So that's a question for your next witness.
Okay. Um, and also, for clarification, could you, could you clarify the hours of operation?
Yes, typically, um, I think Starbucks wants the ability to operate, operate between five thirty and eleven. Um, I think if you look at like the Malvern location, I think they're only open between six A M and eight P M. Um, so it's, they want the flexibility to open for longer hours, but in all likelihood, they may be open for less.
Right, yeah, because I, I've noticed that typically they're not open till, Starbucks are not open till eleven o'clock.
Correct. I, I think, um, I, I tend to think dealing with a lot of these retailers, they're always worried about kind of what changes, what changes in their use. So, especially when they look at use kind of, um, use clauses and leases and flexibility, they try to keep the max flexibility.
So, so their request for this application is five thirty to eleven P M?
Co- correct, but I truly don't expect them to be open that, but again, it's up to what Starbucks wants, so.
Okay, thank you.
How many employees would be at this location?
Um, so I, I will have to get that number from Starbucks, so I don't not know off the top of my head.
Uh, I would layer on to that, um, questions, uh, similar to some that have been brought up around, um, expected wages and benefits. I think, uh, important things for us to, um, you know, uh, consider as we're. If that information is available.
Yeah, I, I can request and see what the world will provide, so.
Any other questions from council? All right, I have a couple of questions, since this conditional use application is specific to the drive-through lane of a restaurant. How many cars per day are we expecting to go through this drive-through?
I think we're civil engineer, some of those numbers.
Yeah, he, he's done a couple Starbucks's.
Okay.
Be better.
And then, I, I guess my only other question, which is probably for you, um, is this plan shows a portion of the, uh, Starbucks driveway, uh, over the property line into the property that's in Scoogle Township. Um, and I was wondering if you had any conversations with Scoogle Township or how you expected that to, uh, work?
Yeah, so, so fortunately, the only real spot is just this, uh, little section right down here. And currently, currently as exists, there's a curb line here, so what we're thinking about in the next modification is just leaving this existing curb line here, and just having additional hash marks, so we're not actually going to have to go to Scoogle Township to ask for additional permission. So, so we keep it everything outside of, um, other than some basic line striping right there, so.
Any further questions from council? Um, with that, Ms. Stevens, do you have any questions for this witness?
Been living here my whole life, bored of Vegas.
Been living here my whole life, bought it basically twenty-nine years, and I still don't know their names. Um, so when you pull into the shopping center, heading towards going down the dollar store and all that is to your right, there is that three-way stop sign. You guys know where I'm talking about? You know where I'm talking about? Yes, no? You guys know where I'm talking about?
Mr. Anderson is the one answering questions right now, so you have to address your questions to him, and if he doesn't know, he doesn't know.
The only reason why I'm asking is it was a three-way stop when Kmart was there, which you know when shoppers come to Kmart, they park, they go in, there's not that continuity of always driving, adding this car wash now, adding this dollar store now. So it is right here.
Okay.
Okay, there's a three-way stop there.
So she's, she's talking about, uh, yeah, the three-way stop.
Yes, um, they did a three by one, Kmart was there, just like I was saying, cars were stopped. Is there any thought about maybe making that a four-way just because of how many cars are going to be constantly now moving in and out of there? I'm just worried because of a three-way, people aren't going to pay attention as much.
So at the current time, there's no, uh, and I apologize, but there's no consideration in making this an additional stop sign here.
Please, please let the witness finish his.
Yes, adding a four-way, um, I, I think, uh, one of the main things with shopping centers, you're trying to get as many people into the shopping center without backing up onto kind of major road, and one of the things that will happen if we do add a stop sign here, um, it will uh, essentially changes, so it's not a free flow of traffic in it, so there's much higher likelihood of backing up onto um, Nut Road. So I think from the applicant's standpoint, from my standpoint, um, I would really uh, be against adding a, a stop sign here because of that potential effect to that road.
Any further questions?
Go off of that or no?
Yes, you can ask, however, please remember, uh, this application regards the drive-through lane, so the questions need to pertain, and your first question did to traffic and the drive-through and that type of thing.
That, so I was just going to go off of why he thinks adding a backup, I understand that. I would understand there wasn't a traffic light there too, but there is that traffic light as well, so either way, that traffic light would help that. That's just fine.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Bernardo, do you have any questions for this witness?
I do. I was wondering when the last traffic study was done?
Uh, so I believe the last traffic study, I, I want to say it was nineteen ninety-eight, and that was done for the traffic generation of Kmart, which we will obviously provide to the township manager with, um, the update base on the new uses.
So between um, both locations of the car wash and the Starbucks, the traffic study will be done for both?
So it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a complete traffic study in the sense of looking at all traffic counts on kind of all the intersecting roads, it's based on the fact that the Kmart was, when it was developed and approved, it was essentially allocated X amount of traffic, uh, production for that parcel. So what the traffic analysis will look at is looking at, kind of adding these additional uses, looking how much traffic they are producing in addition to how much traffic that's being produced by the Cube Smart as a whole. So we'll look at the comparison between the Cube Smart plus the two new uses compared to, um, what the Kmart was approved for back nineteen ninety-eight.
So that won't include the growth of Phoenixville and the traffic on Nut Road?
Uh, no, no, we would not look at the, um, most, uh, current growth in Phoenixville, um, but remember, I mean, um, properties essentially, if you're, um, were granted approvals, create X amount of traffic, um, it's not necessary, uh, it would be fairly unusual to, um, to put a restriction to, uh, reduce that amount of traffic generation that you were given the approval for in the past.
Okay, um, you mentioned that there would be no, uh, negative impact, and I'm just wondering, as a local coffee shop owner, um, knowing that there's other, four other coffee shops in town, two of which are nonprofits, do you think that that would impact us as small business owners as well as the employees that we have working for us?
I would object to the relevance that that's not a proper zoning consideration and to the extent that party status is requested because of the fact that you're a competitor that is not standing, um, in the, for a zoning application.
I mean.
I will, uh, sustain your objection regarding the question, however, as far as party status goes, I, I think you have a standing objection. Um, so Ms. Bernardo will continue to be permitted to ask questions that are relevant.
Okay. Um, I think that was all of my questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bernardo.
Thank you.
That's all we have for this witness. No, only parties can ask questions.
New face for you tonight.
Yes.
I do. Sure, Anand, A-N-A-N-B, last name B-H-A-T-T.
And with whom are you employed in, what capacity?
Uh, with RNA Engineering, I'm a principal, uh, and founding partner at RNA Engineering.
And your CV is marked as Exhibit A ten, which sets forth all your credentials, qualifications, background and experience, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And have you testified in a number of, um, zoning boards and municipalities in Pennsylvania regarding man use and zoning matters?
I have.
And have you been accepted as an expert in civ- civil engineering in those matters?
Yes.
At this point, I would ask that Mr. Bat be considered, um, an expert in the field of, uh, civil engineering.
Any objection from council? Any objection from Ms. Stevens? Any objection from Ms. Bernardo?
No.
Mr. Baath is certified as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Baath, you're familiar with what's being proposed and the existing conditions on the property, correct?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with Exhibit A seven, which is a copy of the survey plan showing the existing conditions?
Yes, I am.
And referring to that plan, could you please, uh, describe for the board the existing conditions on this site?
Uh, sure, uh, as, uh, Mr. Solz, uh, Solz, as mentioned, the property has currently hundred and two thousand square feet, uh, existing building, which is which, which was used as a Kmart building, uh, currently it's used as a self-storage facility. There are four hundred thirteen parking spots for a Kmart, again, used to be a Kmart building, which is a reasonable parking for something like Kmart shopping center. However, for self-storage facilities, overpark, uh, at this current condition. Uh, property is approximately ninety-three percent impervious in current condition, uh, pretty much all impervious, I should say. There are two accesses to the property, one is from the the trap, uh, trap signalized intersection from, with the Wawa, that's the main entrance coming in where, and there is another access to the western prop, western corner of the property, which is mainly for the loading area for the self-storage facility.
And your office was responsible for the preparation of conceptual sketch plan, which is marked as Exhibit A eight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Referring to Exhibit A eight, can you describe in more detail what is proposed for the Starbucks on the property and keep in mind this particular application is just related to the Starbucks, not the car wash?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, so the Starbucks, uh, prop pad side is located to the southern southeastern corner of the parcel. Tucked back in, uh, the horizontal plan or the plan view doesn't kind of show the change in elevation. This Starbucks sits about eight feet lower compared to the Nut Road. Uh, when you, when you're driving to the Nut Road, you would not, again, this parking lot sits much lower, there's a retaining wall which holds the road up. Uh, it's two hundred and two thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet of building area. One of the councilman, uh, member asked the question, where is the, the pickup window? This shutout is the pickup window for the Starbucks. Uh, this is, there is a menu board or the order board in this location. Uh, and there is, there are eleven car stacking, which is, uh, provided within the drive-through lane for Starbucks. Uh, there are twenty parking spots for, uh, kind of proposed right next to the Starbucks, so somebody were to come in and wanted to use the facility in, inside or use the outdoor patio area, which is seven hundred square feet, they will park and walk right up to it, they don't have to cross any tra- traffic or anything to that effect. Uh, as I said, the, the access would be through, the main access is going to be through Nut Road, trap, signalized intersection. It, as Mr. Anderson, uh, informed, uh, the traffic will have to make a left into the main drive while going towards the self-storage facility, another left going towards the lower end of the property or the southern end of the property and going to get into the drive-through lane. There is a significant amount of stacking available. This Starbucks would have been a more of a traffic issue if this was flipped completely and the access was right next to the entrance of the property. So this is more on a isolated secluded entrance to the Starbucks. Uh, knowing the Starbucks is typically a draw for the traffic, they will, people will find out where the drive-through entrance is. We will certainly have, uh, signs directing the traffic where the drive-through is, so there would be, the patron would be uh, directed to the proper location. In addition to the drive-through, there is also a bypass lane on the side of the drive-through. If somebody were to decide, okay, I don't want to wait for, in the drive-through, there is a, there is a bypass lane, go around it, park and go back into the, uh, to pick up. Uh, pick up the coffee or any kind of a, uh, entree they, they ordered. Pedestrian access will be maintained around the building, uh, there would be, as, uh, we had agreed, there would be a connection to the trail. Uh, also, there would be a crosswalk connecting the, the existing sidewalk on the other side of the drive aisle. Lit, getting the pedestrian into the shopping center and connecting to the, uh, Starbucks building without, uh, putting them in a harm's way without having, having any crosswalk or a sign.
Now, you've heard, um, Mr. Anderson testify as to the proposed hours of operation, the peak hours for Starbucks, correct?
That is correct.
And were you also present in the audience to hear the testimony of Tommy's Car Wash as to their hours of operation, their peak hours?
Yes, I did.
And would you agree that the uses are complementary, given that they have different peak hours?
Absolutely. Again, the peak hours for Starbucks are morning, uh, six to eight. Uh, whereas the Tommy's Car Wash, the peak hours are towards the end of the day, uh, after school, after, after work hours, so they're certainly complementary, uh, in, in traffic generation, for sure.
And from a traffic standpoint, are you generally familiar with the trips that were generated for the prior Kmart use?
Yes, I am. I have reviewed the traffic study, which was prepared in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, to be precise. Uh, that was for the approved traffic, uh, Kmart building. That trip generation was eleven thousand fifty-two trips for daily Kmart shopping center. So if that were to be converted to, not that we are trying to do it, but if you were to be converting into Walmart, it would be similar trips, uh, for, for this kind of a building, which is on the, on the premises.
And do you have an opinion based on your experience of whether the trips generated by the new uses and the existing self-storage facility would be less than the trips generated by the Kmart?
Yes, significantly less. So, uh, as Mr. Anderson has testified, existing building, which is a self-storage facility, generates ten to fifteen trip, daily trips per day, uh, they again, that would be on the higher end, to be honest, with it not that much, but on a, on a high day, ten to fifteen trips. For, uh, as, uh, previously testified to Tommy's Car Wash, they're expecting three hundred fifty to six, three hundred fifty to four hundred trips daily. On a busy day, six hundred to seven hundred trips. Uh, so if we add that up close to seven hundred trips for car wash and the existing building for the self-storage, uh, we do have IT trips generation for a coffee shop, which is Starbucks with a drive-through. Uh, that daily trip generation is eleven hundred and sixty-two, three trips, uh, for each, uh, day. Uh, again, the highest would be weekly more weekday morning, which would be ninety-six trips. Uh, and that would be the, that would be the highest generation, I, I believe, uh, council member asked, which word is the highest trip generation? Uh, typically Starbucks, they with the corporate level review, they typically don't approve a site, and we won't be even talking about any coffee shop with the Starbucks name on it without them telling us that queuing is okay. Uh, their required typical requirement is eight to thirteen, uh, queuing from the pickup window to the, where it enters into the main drive aisle and main drive aisle would be considered the main travel coming into the shopping center. So at this point, we, we are looking at twenty-five cars without even getting into the Tommy's Car Wash, uh, area. So that's a significantly more what, uh, Starbucks would require, for any Starbucks would require. And that was another reason why they have not decided to go with a double, uh, uh, order window and merging into one pickup window. Uh, but there is a part, is it, is there a possibility? Yes, there is a possibility to put a double drive-through into a single pickup window. There is no, they realize there is no need for that in this location because of the queuing which is available.
And, um, the proposed redevelopment will result in a reduction in the impervious coverage area, correct?
Correct, uh, I think one of the council member asked the question, uh, currently we have, uh, just to give you some numbers, two hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet of impervious square area, which is about ninety-two point nine percent. With the new layout, with the additional grass, space, grass area, uh, we are reducing the impervious by sixteen thousand six hundred square feet. So, uh, in, in essence, we are reduced going from ninety-two point nine percent to eighty-seven percent to reduce impervious from the current condition. So it's a certainly reduction. Although this is shown as a grass area, it wouldn't be only just grass area, it would be landscaped uh, with shrubs and trees, uh, for the landscape requirement, uh, this is just a conceptual sketch plan right now, so uh, at the land development stage, we would certainly be taking care of the, the landscaping.
And are you familiar with the conditional use standards set forth in the borough zoning ordinance, um, at section twenty-seven dash nine oh five point five A to L?
I am.
And do you believe that the application complies with those applicable standards?
Correct, yes, I.
And I'm going to just walk you through some of those real quickly.
Sure.
And your opinion is the use consistent with the Phoenixville Borough Comprehensive Plan?
Yes, it is. Uh, this is commercial use, which is contemplated with this, the, the shopping center use, which existed, uh, up, up till now, so, yes, it is.
And is the property, in your opinion, suitable for the use and consistent with the objectives and policies of the zoning ordinance?
Ye- yes, it is. The prop, again, as, as I mentioned, the prop, the property was previously developed as a Kmart, uh, a large departmental store, which, uh, kind of use, providing two, three separate uses, which are uh, complementary and not conflicting at, at all for, for the, for this shopping center area.
And given your testimony, uh, regarding the, the prior traffic generated for the Kmart, uh, which was previously approved on the property, would you agree that the the traffic generated from the proposed use will not decrease the level of service and will have a negligible impact on, uh, traffic?
Yes, again, this was approved for a Kmart, which had eleven, close to eleven thousand trips, daily trips. We are going down to, uh, close to eighteen hundred trips, so significantly less traffic, uh, compared to what was approved for, for Kmart shops.
And you have previously testified as to the circulation and the drive-through, and do you believe that the proposed Starbucks was designed to allow for safe and convenient circulation for the customers?
Uh, I, I believe so, that's one of the safest location, you can put the entrance to the drive-through and the access around the building. Further away from. further away from the main intersection, further away from the main drive aisle. I think that, that is the location we, you would want the, that drive-through to enter.
And are there any residential districts surrounding the area that would require screening from this use?
No.
Do you believe that the proposed use will have any impact on other public infrastructures such as water sewer or adequate fire protection?
Again, this property was developed as Kmart, that there are accesses around the building for the self-storage facility as well as there is a full access around the building. So there is no adverse impact to the, the emergency access vehicles.
And I believe you already mentioned this, but the server to management would be addressed at the time of land development, is that correct?
It will be, again, we are essentially reducing the impervious, so reducing the flow surround off from the property. One of the council member asked about the floodplain. The site being located in floodplain, but it's a location, it's a, as you may know, it's AE zone, which is a elevation assigned to the property or the floodplain. That floodplain does not encroach into the parking lot of the Tommy's. So the, the elevation wise, it's much higher compared to the, where the floodplain elevation is on that creek. And hence, it would not be an impact to the Tommy's Car Wash, that there would not be an impact of flooding the car wash or the chemicals getting into the creek.
That's all the questions I have.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I have a couple. So one, and can I steal the? So excited to use it. So one question I had is, this barrier right here, is this, can you explain to me exactly what that is? Is that something that cars can drive through? Is that something pedestrians can drive through? What, what does that look like?
That's correct. That's a grassy island. Creating that island so that traffic is directed towards it. So rather than kind of, because there will be interconnecting traffic where people are coming in and be trying, people, somebody in need for a coffee rushing to the drive-through. We do not want traffic mingling. That's the reason.
That, that makes perfect sense. Just wanted to confirm. And then the other thing is, I know down here and down here, there are existing sidewalks. And I know you mentioned that there's an eight-foot elevation change. Is there any consideration to connect the sidewalks here down into the parking lot for the Starbucks? Or would a pedestrian walking to the Starbucks be expected to kind of walk all the way around?
That's a great question. Because of the accessibility requirement for ADA, it is, you know, catch the gradient eight feet is very difficult. So we are using the existing sidewalk along the eastern side of the driveway. Not, there is an existing sidewalk on eastern side of driveway.
Here, I'll treat you back.
Make sure they can traverse through this area and go get into the side, side Starbucks.
I'm just looking at how the parking is set up. Is there a risk that if the drive-through backs up far enough, cars will be getting parked in?
You are correct on that. And that's why there Starbucks, we required eleven park cars into the, the thing, into the area. There is a possibility that the people will start backing up into this area rather than backing into this area. Because you're, you're driving on the, on the right side. So you are, you're allowed to back out into this area. You're not coming out of this area. You're not traveling north, you're traveling south, correct? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, but if you're following the arrows, like how would you back out?
I mean, I guess I was just looking at all of those.
If there were cars in queue all the way around the building?
The queue would be on the opposite side of the driveway. The driveway is on the, so if somebody were to go out, like say somebody's parked, you, if you're parked, maybe third or fourth parking spot, because this is the furthest away. So you, you're most likely not going to park that far to the building. Say everything is taken here and then you're trying to park here. That's when you will, you will try to back out with a half the driveway open to you because you, it will be open. It's not, your traffic is traveling north, not the south. That's why.
So that's wide enough that you could back out?
Yes.
Mr. Bot, just to jump in quickly, maybe ask a question that helps. Does the the grassed buffer end at the beginning of the queue? So would traffic be able to drive south and then see that the queue is extending and then kind of pull into that larger parking area and then queue back that way?
Yeah, you, you certainly can. That's, and again, we, we, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, we will be reconfiguring this area a little bit more. So because of the, the, where the township line falls, we will need to, we will be able to kind of manage it better with the, somebody will be able to kind of go on the larger parking lot and come, come into the site.
That grassy area, will there be any egress for pedestrians? Like, I'm just thinking of employees, if they were to park further away, will they be able to access it easily?
Most likely, the, the employees would be parking at those top, top four parking spots. That would be employee parking spaces.
Following up on Mr. Weiss's comments, and I, I know this gets into a situation where we have a unfortunate municipal boundary. There's quite a bit of real estate, considering this, where we're at, between the, the corner of the improvements and, and going into the intersection that is currently vegetation. And I would like it, at least under future consideration, to explore the possibility of a staircase in there if possible. Because I, it, it clicks that that could be a logical way, understanding that you'll have your ADA access elsewhere. It seems like it would be a, in a, a nice addition to that intersection to provide that level of, of access. And I think it seems like you could do so cleanly. I know that wasn't necessarily a question, but my question is, during peak hours on the traffic engineering phase, Tommy's was saying they could do one hundred and ninety cars an hour. I'm not sure how many cars would be peak for, for Starbucks. Roughly.
Again, it's, it's for the morning, which is from six to ten or eleven o'clock, basically. And it's ninety-six total cars, basically. That's what the.
So my, my concern would just be the, the conveyance point where if they're coming out of Tommy's, they're, they're where you'd be making a left into the Starbucks off of the access road. If cars are leaving Tommy's and they're the cross conveyance during peak hours at the entrance point to Starbucks.
So Tommy's exit is to the north. And they will have to make a left, go in front of the self-storage facility and will come out this way to get into the queue. Is that what you're referring to?
So, no, the first part, yes. But if they're not going to Starbucks, they make a left and then they make a left on that, at the, the east-west access road right there. So they go left there. And that point right there, right, right where Starbucks would be turning left into that. Is there, is there a way of modeling the actual traffic in flow of that, that convey, that, that queue point of people turning left into Starbucks? Does that back up into the intersection? Because that doesn't look like it's, from the left to the stop sign, doesn't look like it's terribly large amount of space.
We, we, again, you're, you're correct on that, that it is, it is a shorter leg of the, the T-intersection, I would say. We can, based on, again, during land to open phase, we can certainly try to put, see, consider if there is a stop sign, we, which we can stop the traffic coming out to Tommy's. But I do not believe that's going to be necessary because there is an access. So as I had mentioned, there is an access around the building, which is one-way going out. So most likely, again, we are creature of habits, right? So we are, we are going to, somebody's going to go to the car, Tommy's Car Wash, and then they will come out and they, they'll realize that I don't want to kind of get stuck in Starbucks traffic. Let's go to the, you can go around the building and take a, get out of the building, behind the building and make a, make a right towards going towards the right side, making, making, going to, going westward.
And, and coming in from the bottom west corner, there is not access.
So that's, that's one-way only going around.
And, and at the bottom, they've closed off that driveway.
Correct.
At that point. And then inland development, we can discuss the, the car path with behind the, the storage center. Because I, I don't know that that falls into a wide enough thing to, to be a, a regular exit. That's main questions.
Any other questions on council? Mr. Bot, can you, you described that there was a twenty-five car queue if we went, you know, kind of around the building? If we just stayed in the drive-through lane from the beginning of the drive-through lane to the service window, how many cars are, do, can we stack?
Eleven.
Okay. And you mentioned that for pedestrian internal circulation, there would be some sidewalk along the northern portion of the Starbucks pad site. I don't see that on the plan.
Ye- ye- you are correct on that. This plan was submitted and then we had met the staff. And we, we understand the, the recommendation for the staff connecting the trail into, along the, I should say, eastern portion of the property and connecting into the, the, the existing sidewalk as well as connecting to the connection from the sidewalk to the Starbucks. So there will be accommodated at the time of land to open, for sure.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Council, I don't believe has any more questions. So Ms. Stevens, do you have any questions for this witness? Oh, no, no questions. And questions regarding his testimony, correct? Ms. Vernalda, do you have any questions for this witness?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just requested our exhibits be accepted into the record.
So accepted. Ms. Stevens, do you have any testimony or evidence you would like to put into this hearing? If you had a witness, you could bring a witness to the stand and ask them questions. Yes, no, about this application, about the drive-through. Okay. Ms. Vernalda, do you have any testimony or evidence that you would like to submit to this board on this application?
No, I don't.
Ms. Vernalda? Oh, are we disconnected?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will accept comments from the public now. So not questions. If you have an opinion on this application, you can provide your opinion on this application.
Lisa Longo, Phoenixville. The concern I have is that six to eight is going to be a high-traffic time. And with the new school being proposed for Hare's Hill, this could really impact school bus drive times. So I think that area is already highly congested in the morning. I, I, I think, you know, the traffic study, that needs to be taken into account as well as the number of new units that are coming into Phoenixville in that area that are going to be using that for egress. I think it's a traffic nightmare, and I think you're going to see a lot more accidents.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Vernola, would you like to provide public comment and your opinion?
Yes, I just want to make mention that the traffic studies just seem very outdated and they're not accurate. So I'm hoping that a new one is done. And I'd also like to just make mention that we hope the council considers what the impact of a Starbucks would, would do to the local businesses that have helped build Phoenixville up into what it is today. We survived a pandemic. And we, you know, we're nervous, obviously, about the recession in twenty twenty-three that we keep hearing about. And we are very concerned about this. We feel like we've been a very big part of fundraisers and doing a lot of.
Ms. Vernola, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
I just want to, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the, the traffic studies just seem very outdated. It's important to us that the traffic study is done accurately and to date as well as we'd like to just be heard as far as what the small businesses have done for Phoenixville, especially specifically surviving through the pandemic, fundraisers and other things that we've contributed. There's four coffee shops in Phoenixville, and we are all, should be considered to be essential to what Phoenixville is. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Verdola. Any final statements from the applicant?
Just like to say in closing, first of all, thank you for listening to us this evening. And we believe the evidence supports that the applicant demonstrated compliance with the applicable conditional use standards set forth in your ordinance to entitle it to a conditional use for the drive-through for the proposed restaurant use on the site. Thank you.
With that, it's my understanding that council will take the application and the testimony and exhibits presented here this evening under advisement. And this hearing will be continued until January tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM for the board to render a decision. And with that, I would entertain a motion to close this hearing and resume the public meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Oh, yep, we're done, Gail. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes section eleven of our agenda tonight. Thank you, Scott, for running that. We'll move on to section twelve, which is reports of committees, boards and commissions, items that were not in, or items that were not included in the consent agenda. Mr. Moore with planning commission?
Nothing, no meeting this month. There was one meeting, there was a meeting last month. One preliminary sketch about a new development at the Bluebird, the jewelry location at Star and Bridge. It was preliminary sketch, so further development still to be seen, nothing else. And our next meeting will be in January.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Dugan with Harb?
There's nothing else that wasn't on the congenit, consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchner with regional planning committee?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Dugan with rec board?
In the interest of time, I'll just mention two things. There's family night out in two days, well, almost one. And for the graham cracker construction of the house, of the little graham cracker houses. And that's Thursday, the fifteenth, at six thirty. And there's a blood drive at the rec center on the twenty-eighth of December. Other than that, you can refer to the website for all the programs that we offer.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Beautification advisory, Ms. Webb?
Nothing to report. There's just still two openings on the company.
Ms. Berkeley with tree advisory?
Just two quick things. On November nineteenth, since our last meeting, we did have a successful volunteer-led tree planting. So thank you to the Tree Advisory Commission and the volunteers that came out and helped us plant some new trees within the borough. And we just do, oh, still do have vacancies. It's getting to be late, guys, sorry. We still do have vacancies. So if you're interested in, involved in that commission, please reach out to myself or one of the members of that commission.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Moving on to police personnel and public safety, Ms. Berkeley?
Again, nothing to report, but if you are interested in any of our boards or commissions, please reach out to myself or one of your council members, and we will set up something in January to talk about that.
Very good. Mr. Moore, Parks and Rec Committee?
Nothing to report, already handled in the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchner with Policy Committee?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, council schedule and advertise an ordinance, uh, mending chapter 15, um, motor vehicles and traffic.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Carmenito. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes eight zero. Mr. Kirchner, anything else from policy?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss with infrastructure, uh, infrastructure, technology, transportation, sustainability?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. No action or report at this time, pending the outcome of item 15A on the agenda later. It looks like our next meeting will be on January 17th at 7:00 PM.
Very good. Should have some fun things to work on next year. Ms. Dugan with finance?
I also make a motion to recommend Borough Council award the water treatment plant intake, take, uh, replacement project to Blooming Glen Contractors Incorporated and base bid total of $1,604,155 per the Borough Engineer's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion for the, uh, for the replacement of this, of our intake valve?
I did just want to follow up earlier discussion about how we're using the water fund for the, for the fire truck.
This is factored into it.
Already?
Yep.
This was already subtracted from the, the total. Okay.
Any other questions on the motion for the, uh, award? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Dugan, anything else from finance?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. This will open up the second and final round of public participation tonight. Members joining us in the, in person can step up to the microphone and we will, uh, please submit your, your name and, uh, address. Any members of the public who are joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand digitally, and a member of our staff will unmute you and announce your name, allowing you to speak, uh, and make comments to council. Go ahead.
Lisa Longo, Phoenixville. I have a couple of questions. Under new business, item D, when you talked about all the numbers, I never heard a total. What is that total cost? And what exactly is this for? What is a tractor-drawn aerial TDA? That's one question. The second question is on item E. So when we're talking about this Tower Direct, is that a private for-profit company? Are we actually going to another for-profit company? Because again, I'm going to go back to wages, benefits, things like that. When we outsource these things, when we get rid of good municipal jobs that had a union and a pension and benefits, we move the burden to welfare assistance. Your taxes are going to go up. So we have to make a decision. Do we want to keep allowing this kind of outsourcing? That is a local governance issue. To get back to the earlier conversations that were had about the two different eminent domains, right? So council has these two opposite, um, views. One group is coming opposing an eminent domain, and another is coming asking you to do it. So democracy is supposed to be participatory, right? You guys were elected to represent your constituents. You're supposed to hear feedback and meet with them and reach out to us. You could each do a poll in your wards to see how people feel about these specific issues. That is how this is supposed to work. And when we look at why people don't trust government, this is why. Because they watch these meetings or they hear about it, and they go, well, everybody spoke against the eminent domain at Fillmore Village. Nobody spoke for it, but yet council's going to approve it unanimously. Everybody spoke in favor of eminent domain at the kindergarten center. They have 2,000 people who've signed petitions, but council's not going to do anything about that one. So people look at that and they say, government is broken, and this is why. And that's why I stayed, was to stay there. Thank you.
Any other members of the public joining us tonight in person, wishing to make any comment during public participation, please step towards podium, provide your name and address.
Hello, Elizabeth Stevens, coverage crossing. Um, I just wanted to come up and say thank you guys for approving and wishing on a star to be able to do their third annual event at the new recreational center. Um, I don't know if you guys will be able to answer this question now, if I have to do another application on top of it. Um, I am crossing my fingers of doing a motorcycle run along with this event, either at the beginning of the event or at the end event, starting at the recreational center, and then just going around to Phoenixville and maybe even like Kerberton and back, meeting up at the recreational center. Um, so that's one thing that I would like to address. And the other thing that I would like to address is signage, just being able to put like event signs, so people could come and know where this event is always, is helping to good cause of Make-A-Wish. So, thank you.
Any members joining us virtually on Zoom tonight, please raise your hand digitally if you are interested in making any public comment. Apparently, I do not see any hands raised digitally. So with that, I will close this, uh, second and final round of public participation. Uh, up next on the agenda is communications and council participation, and we'll just make a couple notes here. Uh, for the sake of filling in the information, the, um, item D was a $1.9 million KME custom, uh, tractor-drawn aerial. That is a very large ladder truck that is a, um, it's a bifurcated, uh, ladder truck, so it actually has better access to smaller streets. And item E, uh, we are currently with a private outsourced provider. This has no effect on jobs within the borough, pensions, unions, et cetera. For the, any other concerns about the Make-A-Wish application, please just reach out to staff who are in touch with you about your application. They can answer any questions, um, about your follow-up questions. So uh, with that, any, um, other communications or council participation? We do have two items considered here. We have a motion to cancel the remaining December Borough Council committee meetings and, uh, rec board meeting. Well, it's council's pleasure. This is what we typically do every December. Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And second, tonight, we have a consider scheduling and advertising for the 2023 meetings of Borough Council and various boards, commission, committees, and commissions.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. What I would like to propose, um, for council to consider, and we can either, uh, adopt it tonight or, uh, move it forward next year, is that we actually move, uh, council to a 6:00 PM time slot. And I don't know if everybody's ready to commit to that, um, tonight, or if that would work for people's schedules in general, but I wanted to at least float it out there as a possibility since we're getting late and, uh, we don't. Yeah. So, and we don't normally go this late, but, uh, this was a, at least a, a prime example of, um, you know, it would be nice if it was earlier. Um, but I don't know everybody's personal situations, and I don't want to make anything that makes life harder. I don't know when we have to advertise, um, the actual calendar for, for concurrence, but, um, I don't know if anybody has any objections to moving to a 6:00 PM time slot.
I feel like this is making this decision under duress. Whoa, let's bring that one up at 11:30 at night.
Just proving a point.
His cunning plan.
Yes.
Typically, what we would do is, uh, without that statement, uh, you would approve the calendar, and then we advertise at the beginning of the years, because our first meeting is actually the, uh, personnel and public safety, uh, along with potentially harm. Those would not be affected. Uh, with that, we would advertise in, uh, in totality. If you were to change beyond tonight, we would do in totality, but then when you decided, or if you decided, uh, in January or February, or whatever time you decide, we would then make a, a change on only that topic area. So if you're in agreement tonight, it's easier, uh, but if you're not ready, uh, we understand and we'll disadvertise as, as normal.
Does anybody have any objections to moving, uh, Borough Council meetings to a 6:00 PM time slot?
Selfishly, I, I am opposed, and my reason is, uh, I, I do like the ability to get home and see my kids, uh, before a meeting. Current state, if we did move to six, I wouldn't be able to see my kids, and they'd be asleep before the meeting would be over. Now, that's not just me, like, I, I'm committed to what we do here, and I'd be willing to do that, but I would worry that it could, uh, serve as a barrier to entry for other people who are parents of young children from being willing to serve. And I do think people who have young children in the borough are important voices, uh, on the council. So that would be my, my pause for concern in moving the time up. Um, but again, I, I, I'm not going to stand in the way of, of the broader group. So just wanted to throw that out.
Aside from taking action to advertise next year's, uh, meetings, we don't need to move the, to 6:00 PM if, if it's, if there's any concerns. I just wanted to float that out as a discussion point. I brought it up last month as just a topic. Uh, there's a motion on the table, though, so, um, or a motion on the floor, so, um, for, as it's written, for 7:00 PM is as, is, as we've
Right, if, if you would like to make a motion to adopt the schedule as written, however, with the amendment that Borough Council is at 6:00 PM. That could be a, a motion. That could approve, that could accomplish what you're looking to accomplish.
And it would just be the one official meeting of the month that would be moved, because the other meetings would stay.
Yeah, all the other times it's the same.
Was I the second on that one?
You were.
Do I have to amend my second?
You would.
In direct conflict with my own wishes.
100%.
So, uh, I amend my second accordingly.
I actually agree with the other Brian. I, I like seven.
Yeah, I, I think Brian has a legitimate point. I mean, you know.
Okay, so, uh,
Brian and Brian.
What? It's too late for Robert's rule reading, um. So let's stay the course. What do we need to just do to stay the course, Scott?
Someone just make a new motion to adopt the schedule.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to, to schedule and advertise the 2023 meetings of Borough Council and various boards, commissions, and committees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight, motion carries seven, one. Well played.
Thank you, Dana.
With that, staff reports are in the packets for manager, police, fire, planning codes, um, public works, finance, and human resources. Is there any questions on any, uh, staff reports? Uh, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. We will not be making any votes in, so we will be adjourning into an executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes of real estate and litigation.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? We will not be coming back from this item, so, um, everybody have a great end of the year, and we will see you in January. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Good night. Thank you, everybody.